Thank you very much. Um, so look my script here, one second. Great, I now call this public hearing of Thursday, June 25th to order. Counsel, for the purpose of confirming your, we have quorum, please ensure your video is turned on. And if you need to exit, please inform the clerk before doing so. This meeting is convened by electronic means as authorized under the order of Minister of Public Safety and Solicitor General, Emergency Program Act, Ministerial Order Number M192. As such, members are participating by phone, and I am also participating by phone. If my connection is lost during any portion of the meeting, we'll recess until my connection is restored. If council loses connection during any portion of the, of the hearing, we'll need to recess the meeting until the connection is restored as well. If council loses connection during the voting process, we have staff on hand to facilitate you getting back online as quickly as possible, and we'll suspend the voting process. The contact information has been circulated to you. The live stream, this meeting will continue with audio only as council are participating in the meeting by phone. Presentations, amendments, and vote results will be projected to viewers when available. And I know the clerks will do our best to make sure that the voting results are, are projected. Sometimes I, I cheer a little quickly and those, those don't go up, so I'll try to leave long enough pauses so the public can see those votes. Last, we have speakers who will be providing comments to council by phone, and a moderator will assist in patching the speakers through when their term, when their turn comes up. Clerk, we have the roll call, please.
Mr. Wood is in the chair, Counsel Carr.
Here.
Counsel DeGenova.
Present.
Counsel Frye.
Here.
Counsel Swanson.
Here.
Counsel Hardwick.
Present.
Counsel Weave.
Present.
Counsel Boyle.
Present.
Counsel Domino. Counsel Domino, are you on the line? Counsel Bligh.
Present.
And Counsel Kubiyan.
Present.
You have called Mayor Stewart.
Thanks very much, clerks, and you're a little faint as well, so I'm not sure if it's a microphone or volume thing, but it'd be good if we could hear you, if it was a little louder. I can hear everybody else loud and clear, though, so that's good. Before we begin, of course, we want to acknowledge that we're on the, the traditional unceded territories of Musqueam, Squamish, and Sleabaltooth, and thank them for having care for this land, and look forward to working with them in partnership as we continue to build this great city together. Just ask folks to mute if you're not speaking, I can hear some background noise. Um, so just, if you're, if everybody could just check to see if they're muted, that would be, that would be great. I also want to take a-
Is there the internet or something?
Oh, I can hear some noise there as well. I also want to take a moment to recognize the immense contributions to the City of Vancouver staff who work hard every day to make our city an incredible place to live, work, and play, and again, really commend them on their work during this COVID-19 pandemic, which has really strained all governments to their limits. Before we begin, there's a few announcements. Speakers have five minutes to make their comments, and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations, and if they are a resident of Vancouver, and that's a new addition to our process, that I will be asking when you're speaking for your name, as well as whether or not you're a resident of Vancouver. Again, I hear some background noise, so if you just make sure you're on mute, that would be great. I think somebody, why I'm getting an echo is somebody's not on mute, so thanks. Speakers may only speak once, and should follow along on Twitter, @VanCityClerk for updates of the, of the progress of the meeting, so they don't miss their turn to speak. Any comments on agenda items can be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca. If you are on the list and you do miss your turn to speak, I do call at the end of, during public hearings, I call three times for speakers, so you could put yourself back on the list if you, if you happen to miss your time in the queue. Speakers with presentations are reminded that the public live feed has a slight 20-second delay. To navigate through the slides of your presentation, please say next, so please just indicate to the clerk that you'd like them to go to the next slide by saying next. Finally, if council does not conclude, hearing from all speakers this evening will recess and reconvene at a later date, and we will announce that later in this meeting, depending on how it goes. A reminder that council's role at a public hearing is to be a quasi judicial body, which means that council is only to consider the merits of the rezoning application or heritage designation. Council members may ask clarifying questions from speakers, including the applicant or technical advice from staff, which should save debate for after the close of speakers. And I'll remind council of that as we go through these proceedings. After hearing from speakers, council may: One, approve in principle the application; Two, refuse the application; Or Three, defer the application for further consideration. So now we're going to start on our first, first application, which is text amendments, and I will ask the clerk to read the application and the summary of correspondence.
This is an application by the General Manager of Planning, Urban Design, and Sustainability to amend the zoning and development bylaw and several official development plans to update and simplify the city's land use regulations and related land use documents, and to make them more user-friendly. In combination with permit processing improvements, these amendments will help to simplify, clarify, and streamline permit review. Various housekeeping amendments are also proposed for the parking bylaw. Since being referred to public hearing, council has received two pieces of correspondence in support of the application, 39 pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application, and one piece of correspondence related to other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 5:00 PM today.
Right, and before we begin with the process, I just want to remind the listening or viewing audience that any speakers of this item who wish to speak to council, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 5928142 hashtag to get on the list before the close of the speakers' list, and that number will be tweeted out and available on the live stream, just in case you forget it, and I'll repeat it throughout the proceedings. So we have Heather Burpee from the Regulation Redesign Team on the phone to present the application and counsel the, we do have speakers, so we'll proceed with the presentation, which is 20 slides. So if I can turn it over to Ms. Burpee.
Okay, um, first Gil Kelly, the General Manager of Planning, Development, and Urban Design would like to speak.
Okay, sure, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to make a very brief statement here because the council, as we have, have received a real flood of mails today, emails, and on this topic. And I just wanted to clarify because there's some, some misinformation out there. Um, there's a characterization by some of those emails, so this is a blanket citywide rezoning, and I just wanted to be clear, and Heather will cover this in her presentation very clearly, that this does not propose to change development standards in any, any of the districts across the city, with, with the exception of a clarification of what, what the definitions are for balconies and, and porches and so forth. So this is not changing rules and regulations across the city. These are cleanup amendments that are relatively modest in nature and important, and that this is part of a stepwise process to revamp the zoning and development bylaw and associated bylaws over a multi-year period. And you've seen a couple of those installations already, this is the latest. The, the whole object of this is to, the series of amendments, and is to comprehensively revise the zoning and development bylaw for clarity, for ease of use, and to eliminate duplication and inconsistency. That is to say, to make a better platform for policy. This is explicitly not a policymaking initiative on its own. Anything that's a major policy initiative would be carried out through other means. This is a matter of creating an up-to-date and better platform for whatever zoning policies exist, and, and whatever future ones the council would like to make. So I just want to clarify that because there's a little bit of a misunderstanding circulating in the community about that. So thank you for that, and I'll turn it back over to Heather.
Great, thank you so much, please proceed.
Okay, good evening, Mayor and council. Um, I'm Heather Burpee, a senior planner with the Regulation Redesign Project. And so I'm going to present just a brief overview of the project and work to date, the proposed regulatory amendments, engagement work we've done, and our next steps. Regulation redesign is a corporate priority project to support the Vancouver economy by improving the regulatory framework. It is aligned with work to improve permit processes, but the main objective of regulation redesign is not process, but to simplify the land use regulations. Regulation redesign will create more user-friendly land use tools through consolidating, clarifying, and modernizing regulations. This will create an improved framework that will better accommodate the more substantive policy and zoning changes that Gil was referring to that will be implemented through other priority work programs, such as the Employment Lands Work and Vancouver Plan. The project has a three-year time, timeframe, and is focusing on three main groupings of work. The first is to modernize bylaw structure and format to make it easier to use and understand. The goal is to deliver a reformatted zoning and development bylaw in 2022. I will be doing a lot of consultation as we work toward this. The second is to simplify and clarify land use regulations. So the amendments that we're talking about tonight are part of this work and are incremental changes toward more simplified zoning regulations. The third group is to rationalize and clarify the entire framework of land use tools, so the efficiencies that are achieved through regulation redesign are sustained. So this includes establishing procedures for better coordination of policy development and implementation, and providing communication about new regulations or changes to regulations. To highlight some of the work that we've done to date, in 2018 and 2019, we reported to council with regulatory amendments that included reformatting Sections 2, 10, and 11 to put them in table format, removing gendered terms throughout the bylaw, clarifying intent statements, and updating regulations for artist studios. An inventory of land use documents and an online document library were also created to make it easier to find information. We've been working to improve the coordination and implementation of policy development through the creation of new procedures and document templates, and the re-establishment of an internal policy implementation advisory committee. We've also done a lot of engagement since the project started in 2018. This includes working on an ongoing basis with a panel of 17 external technical experts, and holding workshops and focus groups with a wide variety of stakeholders and the public to get input on issues and ideas for improving regulations, and to provide guidance for developing the zoning amendments. We've also held open houses and pop-up events, and have a website that provides information on the progress of the project. So the proposed amendments are based on the feedback received through engagement to focus our work on improving the clarity and consistency of regulations. Our redline version of the amendments was made, was made available publicly on June 3rd on the Regulation Redesign website, and the link was emailed out to our mailing list. It was also included in the public hearing materials online. It is a large document, but the volume of amendments is largely a reflection of the repetition of regulations in the district schedules and the number of district schedules being amended. The amendments are to update and consolidate Sections 3, 4, and 5 of the zoning and development bylaw, revise language throughout the bylaw to reflect discretion and relaxation authorities, define terms for balconies, porches, and similar features, and update related regulations, and to make some minor housekeeping amendments to correct references and errors. In terms of the update to Sections 3, 4, and 5, these sections contain clauses on authorities, development permits, and the application of discretion and relaxations. The clauses on these topics are currently spread across each of the sections, making it challenging to find information. So we're organizing and consolidating information by topic. So for example, all information on development permits will now be in Section 4. And to help with the transition, we will provide references to the previous section numbers in the margins of these, of these schedules. In Section 4, we're also clarifying when the Director of Planning would refer the review of a development permit application to the Development Permit Board. So where a district schedule says that either the Director of Planning or the Development Permit Board can make a decision, for example, to allow an increase in height, the Director of Planning will review unless there are potential significant impacts or there is significant public concern, and it warrants review by the Development Permit Board. This is current practice, but the regulations are confusing, so we're providing more clarity to certainty for applicants and the public. We're also introducing a broader relaxation clause to allow the Director of Planning to relax for unnecessary hardship, and adding a definition for unnecessary hardship to Section 2 to help administer it. Unnecessary hardship refers to unique site-specific circumstances that make it difficult to comply with the regulations. For example, an odd-shaped lot that narrows significantly at the rear yard that would prevent someone from building an addition they would otherwise be allowed to build. Currently, the ability to relax for hardship lies primarily with the Development Permit Board, and the Director of Planning can relax in limited circumstances only. As a result, many applications that require relaxation must be appealed to the Board of Variance, which currently involves a four- to six-month wait to get to a meeting and a $2,300 fee. Since the Director of Planning supports many of the applications, to be more expedient, we're proposing to expand the relaxation authority. The last group of related changes are to update terms for relaxations and discretion to accurately reflect authorities and ensure they are located in the right sections of the district schedules, and also to consolidate clauses that vary regulations to enable the retention of a character house by adding them to the current section on character houses in Section 10 of the bylaw, so they're all located in one location and easier to find. As well, they broaden the Director of Planning's ability to vary any regulation for the retention of a character house other than use or density. And this will apply now to across the whole city and all zones, whereas previously it applied in the lower-density residential zones only. The next set of amendments are to add definitions for porches, decks, and similar features to distinguish between them and provide more clarity. We're also improving the consistency of floor space ratio exclusions and related regulations, and updating terms in all land use documents, so they're consistent. And we're coordinating all the interpretive information that's currently located in several documents into one document that's easy to find and available to everybody. So we are introducing definitions for eight features: oning, canopy, balcony, deck, enclosed balcony, patio, entry porch or veranda, and roof deck. I won't go through each of the definitions, they're described in the council report, but would like to note that each definition will include an illustration as a way to help provide more clarity. So the key amendments to the regulations are to update them to make them more consistent across similar zones. Many of the newer district schedules have updated standards, and so a lot of these changes are proposed to update the older districts. And again, these amendments are incremental steps toward more simple, updated, and clear land use regulations. For balconies, to enable more functional and livable balconies, the need for which has been demonstrated with the need to self-isolate during the COVID-19 crisis, the proposed amendments would increase the allowable projection into the front yard for balconies on multiple dwellings by two feet. The amendments also increase the floor space exclusions for balconies in several districts, and in the commercial and industrial districts, allow balconies for non-residential uses to be excluded from floor areas, so businesses have an opportunity to provide these as amenities for employees. Currently, the floor area exclusion for balconies are for residential uses only. The proposed amendments also combine the porch, deck, and balcony exclusions in the residential districts to provide more flexibility in their application, and also exclude the area under a porch so it can be used for storage. We're also proposing introducing floor space exclusions for patios and roof decks in the industrial districts. Exclusions for these features already exist in the residential and commercial zones. Council had, previously had a question about how the balcony regulations align with those of B.C. Housing. The balcony requirements in the B.C. Housing guidelines pertain more to Building Code requirements, and the city's Building Code is aligned with the B.C. Housing requirements, and there are no conflicts created through these amendments. So in terms of engagement on the proposed amendments, we worked with our external advisory panel, and engaged with a broad group of stakeholders through an information session, four pop-up events, an open house, and an online survey. There were over 180 participants, and there was support for the amendments, and also for continuing to improve the consistency and clarity of the regulations, and to make the zoning and development bylaw more user-friendly. So finally, in terms of next steps for the project, we'd like to highlight the work that we're doing to modernize the zoning and development bylaw. The team has been developing a prototype of district schedules that include organizing districts as a family of zones, so for example, looking at all the multifamily residential zones together to understand the building forms that can be built across those zones. And it's revealing that we do have a number of zones that allow similar types of buildings, and so suggests there's some opportunity in the future to consolidate districts. We're also, includes clarifying intent statements, so it's very clear for applicants and the public what forms of development are intended in a district, defining multiple dwelling terms, again, so the regulations can be more clear about the specific type of form, making our rules more consistent, consolidating where possible, and, and developing an intuitive document layout so that it's easier to navigate the bylaws using more tables and graphics to prevent information clearly. And we'll be doing a lot of consultation, reaching out on the draft prototype and the bylaw layout to ensure it meets the needs of a wide breadth of users. So this concludes the presentation.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that. I'm just going to ask, there is no applicant for this, this is just coming from us, so we don't have an applicant on this.
That's correct, this is, this is a city initiative, a staff initiative.
That's great, okay, so because we don't have an applicant, we'll ask right now if council could ask questions to staff now, or we could wait until after we hear from speakers. I don't see anybody on the list, so perhaps we can move to the speakers' list, clerks. And I'm just looking at my list here.
Yes, Mayor Stewart, the speakers are already on the line.
Great, so we have Michael Geller, who's first on. Please, Mr. Geller, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready. I'll start your timer as soon as you start speaking.
Uh, yes, I'm on the line.
Great, whenever you want to start, please go ahead, and I'll, I'll let you know when you reach five minutes.
Okay, now, I'm, first of all, thank you very much. My name is Michael Geller, I'm a resident of the City of Vancouver, and I'm speaking to you as a professional advisor to one of the number of companies that manufactures a balcony protection system. And as part of the work the city is doing, which I very strongly support, as was noted, one of the questions is to better define balconies and enclosed balconies. And if you were to go outside in the parking lot outside City Hall, you would see a lot of gas cars, but you'd also see a lot of electric cars, and you would also see hybrid cars. And in a way, I'm here tonight to talk about the benefits of a hybrid car, which is different from a gas car and different from an electric car. And what I'm talking about is different than an open balcony and different than an enclosed balcony. And as this illustration shows, you will see that this, this retractable glass system can be completely open, it can be partially open, or it can be closed when it's rainy, or windy, or noisy, or there's pollution outside. The next slide, please. Um, over the years, I have been before council and watched how our regulations have changed. I gather it's going to take a while for my next slide to come up, but what I wanted to do was briefly run through, with members of council, the history of balconies and balcony regulations over the 46 years that I've been appearing before council. Because when I first started, it was shortly after the city allowed. Is the city going to advance these slides for me? I think you have to. If I could have the next slide, please.
And sometimes there's a little delay in the, in the order of slides?
There we go. So there was, there, there, there was a time when all Vancouver balconies were included in the FSR calculation. So as a result, developers didn't build balconies, because they, even though they were something that people would enjoy, they felt it was more important to have the interior space. Next slide, please. And so as a result, we didn't see balconies in buildings until 1964, when the city wisely changed its regulations to say balconies up to a certain percentage of area could be excluded from the FSR calculation. And this is why I'm here before you tonight to speak about the importance of excluding balconies that have this retractable glass system from the FSR calculation. Um, the next slide, please. This is, uh, timing, it's everything. Uh, what you'll see in the next slide is, well, no, you won't. You'll see something entirely, there we are, here we are. So in '64, next slide, please. Over the subsequent years, you started to review different requirements, um, because you started to say that open balconies would be exempted from FSR, and hope, just you can keep running through these slides, please. We then decided that because people weren't using balconies for much of the time, perhaps it would be advantageous to allow them to be enclosed subject to certain design guidelines. And indeed, in 1985, you started to allow enclosed balconies, provided they had a certain design character to be excluded. Next slide, please. What I am talking about, though, is a product that does not enclose the balcony. It is a, because it's fully retractable, it effectively remains an open balcony, but where the glass can be opened and closed, but there are air spaces in the glass, so this does not become an exterior wall. As I look at this picture, I'm reminded of one former city council- As I look at this picture, I'm reminded of one former city councillor who lived in a Yelltown condo, who once removed the wall between his enclosed balcony's living room because he didn't fully appreciate that that had been an enclosed balcony. Next slide, please. But my point is, that balcony wall, the exterior wall, was an entirely typical glass wall with double glazing. What I'm proposing that you consider as a hybrid is something that's quite different. So you, because so many developers were now enclosing all the space, particularly because many of the people who are coming from Asia didn't really want open balconies in taller buildings, then the city changed its regulations again. Next, please. I will never get through this in five or eight minutes, but we'll keep trying. Next.
I am giving you a little extra time here, but we are at, just after five minutes.
Thank you.
And you do have, you do have questions, though. Did you have some concluding sentence or two?
Well, I gotta keep going, because if we just run through the slides very quickly towards the end, the city has developed, this schedule shows all the different regulations for all the different zones, and so that's why I applaud what you're doing, but that's why this is such a perfect opportunity to now say, let's recognize that since our bylaws were drafted, there are these new products. It's not an enclosed balcony, it's not a traditional open balcony, it's something in between, and as you can see here, one of its benefits is it's very transparent from the outside, as you'll see in some of my subsequent slides. You can just keep running through these slides, please. You'll see that it's very difficult to see from the outside whether it's open or closed, and that's one of the reasons why, across Canada and around the world, this kind of system is being allowed to be installed without the area of the balcony being included in the FSR. And that's what we're asking you to and staff to do, to simply modify those definitions so that it can be clear that an open balcony can have this system and not be included in the FSR, because it improves energy performance. Next slide, please. It can reduce noise, and that is particularly important when you're on a busy street or you're near a Skytrain. And it can also help with the wind, and a lot of taller buildings, as you may know, once you go above the 15th, 16th floor, it can be extremely windy. The interesting thing is because it completely opens up, in many situations, people actually have balcony, they have barbecues on their balcony, because it is an open balcony, but with this transparent. I brought you some memoranda from the city of Toronto, where this is now being installed without being included in the FSR. In the city of Langley, the township of Langley, they're now recognizing it there in that illustration. There's actually a little portion of the balcony outside for the barbecue. So it's being recognized in many municipalities as not being an exterior wall. Here in the city of the North Vancouver, and some of the councillors may have seen a letter from former Mayor Daryl Masato, because he's supportive.
Mr. Geller, I have given you eight minutes, because you are actually the first person presenting on behalf of a group, although I know we didn't have that quite all worked out, but, so you've had your eight minutes, and thanks for the thorough presentation, but you do have questions.
All right, well then, okay, well, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you.
And, oh, you've got questions.
Maybe you can run through the slides while we're talking.
Okay, sure. Well, we'll turn it over to Councillor Kirby Young for up to five minutes. Councillor Kirby Young, please go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Geller. I've been asking quite a lot recently on all the projects we're getting about balconies, given the importance of COVID and health, so I just wanted to zero in specifically on what's in front of us tonight with the regulatory amendments, and I am very intrigued by what you're proposing from a livability as well as a health perspective. But in terms of, you know, the regulatory process that we're going through tonight and what's here, are you supportive of these recommendations as they stand and presented before council tonight? With a possibility of amending them in the future, or are you suggesting that council not approve them? I just want to be clear on your position.
No, I'm recommending that you approve them. You should most definitely approve them. What I'm asking, though, is that you just give consideration to recognizing this product that's being discussed with city staff for some time, because it doesn't quite fit into the illustration for either an enclosed balcony or an open balcony. As you've clearly noted, the purpose of this exercise is to modernize the bylaws, the product that, and it's not just one manufacturer, there's a number of manufacturers, it wasn't even invented when the bylaws were drafted. And so all I'm asking is that you modify the definition of a balcony, which currently notes that includes a railing, to say that it can also include glass panels, provided they're fully retractable, that they are not sealed, that there's air spaces, because of the benefits they can offer to the enjoyment of the balcony for the resident.
Okay, and I know that you're pretty familiar with civic affairs and how these things work, and legal, there's a lot of legalese in that, so you would be supportive if that was something that the city wanted to look at if that coming forward at a future date? Is that correct?
Although I have suggested to staff that we, that it now would be a perfect time to just tweak that definition. If council thinks this sort of product does enhance the livability and usability of balconies, do what other municipalities are doing. Vancouver's always been in the forefront, to say this sort of product can be installed because it doesn't create an enclosed balcony.
Okay, and do you have any information you can share, sort of final question around the benefits in terms of health, mental wellbeing, livability, given that everybody's living in increasingly smaller spaces?
Yes, indeed, I have a lot of technical studies that have been created that talk about noise attenuation, wind attenuation, but in terms of health, one of the advantages is that certain times of the day, when you're on a balcony on Knight Street, or if you're in that building which I illustrated, and I think there may be a speaker from it, the National condominium at the east end, the Skytrain is incredibly noisy as it goes by those balconies. As soon as you put up this glass, it transforms the space. But certainly in terms of pollution, some of you may know, at the end of last year, I wrote a column predicting that healthy communities and healthy buildings would be a major focus for 2020. I certainly didn't predict this pandemic, but I was responding to something that Councillor Swanson has addressed, which is we need to think much more about providing open spaces and balconies on buildings that are sighted along busy arterial streets.
So that was going to be my next question. So you, that was, so you're saying that that can also serve to protect people from particulate matter?
That's exactly right, because sometimes during the day, in the early morning, in the evening, when the trucks aren't going by, it's not a problem, the air quality is quite good. But at certain times during the day, the air quality disintegrates, and so you would just simply fold these glass panels in, but you could still use your balcony. It's not a room, it's still a balcony, but as my initial presentation that I sent out showed, we've learned during COVID, and I think the mayor made the point, balconies have taken on an increased importance, and those people who've been living in smaller apartments without balconies have really suffered compared to those who could get outside. But if it's really rainy, or really windy, or really noisy, even in the nice weather, that balcony is not a totally enjoyable space to be.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Geller. That's my time, but I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes.
Hello, Mr. Geller. Can you hear me?
I can't see you, Councillor Hardwick.
Excellent. I just, this is great, I love what you're doing. I just want to make it clear that these glass enclosures are not, they don't contain heat like you would if it was a fully enclosed space, they are retractable. You said something about energy savings, but I think it's important to make it really clear that they do not enclose the space entirely in a 12-month-a-year, you know, all-season situation.
That's absolutely correct, and one of the reasons is because there are little air, this is not double glazing like the enclosed balconies in Yelltown, it's a single glazed panel, it actually has air gaps around it because of the way it opens and folds so nicely. And the balcony, as in the case of other municipalities, it's clear that the balcony has drains, it has impervious surface, the space is not conditioned, and that was a term that a number of other directors of planning have used in Abbotsford and Langley Township, noting why they could support this. Now, they've supported it, and I want to be straightforward about this, without amending their bylaws.
Okay, 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 but let me back you up.
Okay.
I'm supportive of this. No, I just, there's one thing I want to be really clear of here, your presentation has focused on this one aspect of this application, as it were, and there's, I think you are aware that there's a lot of other stuff in here as well, but I just want to be clear that you're focusing on one aspect, which I enthusiastically support, by the way, but it's only one aspect of this overall document. Correct?
And I'm suppo, that is correct, and I'm very supportive of the work that the staff have done to modernize and simplify and make more comprehensible the bylaw.
Have you gone into it in considerable detail, or have you focused on this aspect of it?
If you look at slide number 17 that Heather presented, you'll see me standing in that slide. So I have been, not only reading the documents, I was there, and there's a picture on this presentation to prove it.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I'm concerned about certain aspects of it, but I just wanted to say enthusiastically support the aspect of it that you're talking about here today, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for que, oh, Councillor Frye, I think you just snuck on there. Councillor Frye, please, go ahead. Councillor Frye, you might be on mute. Councillor Frye?
Sorry, I have double mute, apparently.
Okay.
Uh, yes, and I did just sneak on there, thank you. Hi, Mr. Geller.
Good evening.
I'm just reading through the redline version here, and as I, as I look at their definition of enclosed balcony, or balcony, comma, enclosed, it does seem to allow for what you've described, as long as it's not conditioned, and then in section 4.7.4, it does allow that the director of planning may permit the following to be excluded in computation of floor space ratio, specifically A, enclosed residential balconies. Does that kind of cover what you're, what you're asking for?
Well, the director of planning was on the line before, perhaps you could ask him whether or not he would give an interpretation that what's being proposed does not constitute an enclosed balcony.
Well, I think enclosed balconies are exempt from FSR is what, what, 4.7.4?
No, 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 they're not. Enclosed balconies are included, are not exempt from FSR. Only up to a certain area, that's precisely the point.
Okay, well, I'll follow up with the director of planning, because it looks like that's what this says. Okay.
No, if, if, thank you.
Okay, bye.
Great, thank you, Councillor Frye. That's it for questions, Mr. Geller, and I'm going to move on to the next speaker, who is Jonathan Kingma, and then we have Ralph Wetstein after that. So second speaker, Jonathan Kingma, whenever you're ready, clerk.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
You can, thanks very much, and I'll start your timer whenever you want.
Okay, hello, my name's Jonathan Kingma. I'm not a resident of Vancouver, I am a resident of Abbotsford, and I actually work for, I'm the regional manager for one of the companies that supplies such glazing. So I'm not going to use any more of your time here, because Geller was, his intent was to represent to a certain degree. He approached us a few years ago after seeing this product in Europe, it's very prevalent in Europe. So all I would like to say today is I am supportive of standardizing the bylaws specifically around balconies. There's a lot of confusions, we deal with a lot of architects and developers in this regard, and I'm just happy to say that if there's any questions specifically on data and testing in relationship to the livability, sustainability, energy savings, those kind of things, I can supply those and have attempted to supply those to the planning department. And one more comment maybe I would like to make is just at the end there from Councillor Frye, I heard some questions in regards to what's allowed, what's not. Currently, there are some FSR exclusions for enclosed balconies, but the real distinction has always been if it creates an exterior wall of the building and somewhat of a conditioned space. So that's, that's always been the biggest concern, is are you creating an exterior wall, or are you maintaining the intent of the balcony, which is outdoor living? So that's kind of where the question kind of comes up, and right now Vancouver allows in certain districts 50% of the balconies to be enclosed, and they are unique in that, other municipalities do not. So I'll leave it at that, and I thank you for your time and the work you do.
Thanks very much, and there's no questions for you, so thank you for joining us this evening. Moving on to Ralph Wetstein, alibi James Dobco. Mr. Wetstein, are you there?
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor, and to you, council. My name is Ralph Wetstein. We live, my wife and I live in the National, which is located at 1128 Quebec Street in Vancouver. I'm the Chair of the Stratocouncil, and I'm also past Chair of the TransLink Community Advisory Committee, and that's primarily because we had a lot of issues with Skytrain. In any event, as a group, we support the modernization of the bylaws with respect to, primarily with respect to the balconies, and we hope that the city changes the bylaws so as to allow for the installation of retractable windbreak systems on a new and existing balconies. Just for some background, in 2015, some of our owners who were frustrated that they could not use their balconies because of the increased Skytrain noise, high winds, air pollution, et cetera, presented the Stratocouncil with a possible solution, and it was to allow owners to install a sliding glass windbreak system on some balconies in the National, which is a 29-story condo that consists of 147 Stratoc units, with 87 of them having balconies. After two years of study and demonstrations and working with the supplier, in this case Luman, Stratocouncil presented the sliding glass windbreak system resolution to our owners at the National Annual General Meeting in June of 2017. The owners were very ecstatic and approved the resolution by a vote of 95.2%. Since then, we've been working with Luman and the city of Vancouver to obtain permanent approval to install the sliding glass windbreak system on our balconies. There's been reluctance by the city planners to allow the installation of this type of product because they believe that it may be an enclosure and that it may affect the aesthetics of the building. So therefore, we asked Luman to install a windscreen or windbreak on one of the, our west-facing units, that happens to be our unit, the one that we live in, so that owners could see what it looks like from the patio, street, seawalls, and to see how we would benefit from having it on our balconies. We were also wanting the city of Vancouver planners and council to see it in order to assist them in confirming that it does not change the aesthetics of the building and that it does not act as an enclosure. We currently have around 20 owners that would like to have the system installed. I believe from my understanding is the city planners were planning on coming to take a look at the installation just prior to COVID-19 hitting. So what my wife and I have determined to date is, so first of all, the Skytrain noise level on the stretch of track in front of Quebec Street, as presented to us by Translink at the December 14, 2018 Community Advisory Committee meeting, the decimal level is between 80 to 90 decibels, and when you look at its classification, that's classified as a level at which sustained exposure may result in hearing loss. Some will say that we should have known that the Skytrain was going to be noisy when we moved in, which is fair comment, I guess. However, Skytrain noise when first built was between 60 to 70 decibels, and has gone up since then because of reduced maintenance, faster speeds, and more frequent trains. Owners can no longer sit on their balconies because the noise is so loud that you cannot hear each other speak. However, with the windbreak glass, the decimal level is reduced to between 62 to 71 decibels, which allows for normal conversation levels. We can now sit and have a conversation on our balcony without having to stop the conversation every time that the Skytrain goes by. every time that the Skytrain goes by. We also get a lot of wind in Vancouver, and now we no longer have to move everything inside on a windy day in order to keep it from blowing away and possibly causing a danger to people below. In the fall and winter, which is important, we no longer have the whistling cold blowing through our main patio door and into our living room. The result has been less heat loss, less inside condo unit noise, and lower energy costs. The balcony also stays nice and clean now, no more mopping up of all the black soot on a weekly basis.
Just thirty seconds, just thirty seconds.
Okay, it's a much healthier environment now that we are not breathing in all the vehicle fumes. We can also spend more enjoyable time on the balcony in the fall and spring months, and it stays warmer, and lastly, it totally attracts and wants to enjoy the summer. In closing, the city is encouraging developers to build and residents to live along Skytrain routes. The city also constantly looks at ways to reduce greenhouse gas. Having windbreak retractable glass system on new and existing balconies would benefit all and is proven to reduce greenhouse gas. We at the National have been trying to get sliding, just one sec, for almost four years now, and would encourage city council and planners to arrange for a visit to see the sliding windbreak glass at our place, and hopefully approve the installation in the not-too-distant future. Thank you.
Thanks for your time, and there's no questions for you, sir, so thank you for participating this evening, and we'll move on to our next speaker.
Mayor Stewart?
Yes?
Can I do a quick audio check with a couple of councillors, please?
Please do, yes.
Councillor De Genova, are you on the line?
I'm trying to get my computer powered up here, Rosemary, so I, yes, I am on the line.
Great, thank you. Councillor Bly, are you on the line as well?
Yes, I am on the line.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks so much, clerks, and we're going to our next speaker now, who is James Dobco.
Hello, good evening, my name is James Dobco, and I'm also a condo owner at the National at City Gate. As Ralph said, this building is one of the towers located near the main street, Science World Skytrain Station. I'm in favor of the proposed changes to the terminology related to balconies, but I think it needs to go a bit further to recognize a new product type, which has already been discussed by other previous speakers. So we all love the surrounding natural beauty of Vancouver and spending time outdoors. However, when you look around at apartment buildings, very rarely do you see anybody on the balconies. So why is this so? In one word, wind. As much of Vancouver is near the water, most of the time there's a constant wind, and this can make the balcony unusable. You know, the sun umbrellas blow over, become hazards, eating outside becomes impossible, using the barbecue is problematic, plants and other objects frequently blow over, and blowing rain soaks the balcony and everything on it. And in addition to the wind-caused issues, there's the dust and the grime that constantly build up, and the noise from the adjacent Skytrain can be overbearing. Now, during the COVID pandemic, we are encouraged to stay at home as much as possible. Even more so than ever, our balconies can provide valuable socially-distanced outdoor space. The frameless glass windbreaks developed by Lumon and other manufacturers address this problem. Now, I understand and share the concern about balconies that are wrongfully converted to indoor living space. This product does not allow this. It is not an enclosure, it's a windbreak. There are small gaps between the glass panels and below the guide track for drainage. It's, so it's not hermetically sealed, there's no insulation, it's just frameless glass panels. Therefore, the text amendments being discussed during this hearing should be updated to recognize that this product should be, it should be treated differently from a traditional balcony enclosure, and certainly not be considered part of FSR calculations. Now, I first approached Lumon about buying a balcony windbreak back in two thousand sixteen, I think that's almost four years ago. I'm the initiator of the windbreak project at the National. Other owners frequently ask me, when can we proceed with the windbreaks, as they're desperate to implement this solution? To say we're exasperated would be an understatement. It's disheartening to see this product allowed in North Vancouver, Langley, Toronto, and all over the world, but not permitted in Vancouver, except if you include it with FSR, of course. However, recently, you know, there have been some encouraging progress with the city of Vancouver in this area, and this hearing is one such example. So to summarize the benefits of a frameless glass windbreak, it resolves the issues caused by winds, it provides the flexibility of an open, partially open, or fully sheltered balcony, and it greatly reduces road and Skytrain noise. It increases balcony safety, if you have small children or pets or something, you know, a glass panel is a good thing. And it provides savings towards energy consumption, it does not allow outdoor space to be converted into indoor living space, and it results in virtually no changes to the aesthetics of the building. And it provides an attractive option for social distancing. So I earnestly urge you to make this small change to the regulations, so we can fully enjoy this great city from the balconies of our homes. Thanks for your consideration, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks so much for your time this evening. You have no questions at this point, so I'm going to move on to the next speaker. Let's see, we've got Mark De Graff, whenever you're ready, up to five minutes.
Yes, can you, can you hear me properly?
Absolutely, please go ahead, whenever you're ready.
Okay, good, thank you. Yes, my name is Mark De Graff, I represent one of the manufacturers of the retractable balcony glazing system that Mr. Geller was referring to. I would like to give a special thanks to the Mayor, Stuart, city councillors, other members of the city of Vancouver. I'd also like to express my support in favor of many of the bylaws that are related to enclosed balconies. I also want to take this opportunity to applaud the initiative that the city has implemented, that I'm positive will lead to good changes. I have been in the single-family building industry and residential multifamily industry for many years, representing the concept of retractable balcony glass. I have worked with, excuse me, and met with many homeowners in the city of Vancouver who have expressed, excuse me, their desire for a sensible solution for the underused balconies and outdoor living spaces. They have told me over and over that they think that if the city allows for the permission of the installation of the concept, that'll add to the quality of their lives. I have met with many of these people over the last five years at events such as home shows, where they noticed our concept that was being demonstrated. I have also represented the concept to many multifamily building industry professionals, and received a great deal of interest and a huge amount of positive feedback. Architects and developers are keen to incorporate the concept into their building designs, as they serve the interest of the buyers and like to provide better homes for their clients. They do express many concerns related to the existing guidelines and bylaws, and I look forward to improved regulations that will allow for new innovative concepts in today's world. I'm also proud to be working for a company that invented a product that adds to the quality of people's lives. I feel good that it contributes to the energy savings, reduces CO2 emissions, increases sustainability on buildings, and protects people from pollution and noise. It is also a frameless system with no vertical melons, and is aesthetically pleasing for all types of architecture. As a father of two newborns living in a condo on the windy thirty-first floor, I look forward to the days when I can spend quality time with my family enjoying a more usable balcony. I thank you for your time and consideration, and welcome any questions.
Thanks so much for your time. I don't, just looking at the screen here, I don't see any questions for you, sir, so just appreciate you coming in this evening and participating.
Thanks, thank you.
Thank you. Going to move on to Ole Vanska. Hey, could you, yeah, state if you're a resident of Vancouver, that's our new requirement, so if you could do that before you start, that would be great, and then you have up to five minutes.
Good evening, thank you so much, Honored Mayor and council members. I'm not resident of Vancouver, I'm from a small township of Monau in Ontario, lived in Canada for ten years now, and I'm being proud Canadian. I'm the CEO of Lumon Canada, so you might say that I'm biased in this situation, but I just want to mention a couple of things that I have experienced during this history in Canada about balcony usage. I've been privileged to work with many different cities in Toronto, Ottawa, Hamilton, Mississauga, and Langley, Abbotsford, and so on, and we have had exactly the same kind of discussions that we have this evening. And it's been great to see how this balcony space is really important for residents of the bigger cities and smaller cities as well, and how important that's to allow our citizens to use that balcony space. And all those bigger major cities in Canada have seen that this is exempt from FSR calculation, and that way it allows people to use this kind of systems in their balconies. I'm, especially during this COVID scene, and many, many customers have come to us saying that, how they can't use their balconies, and especially thinking those elders and residents of our cities who are not able to go outside, and this has totally given a new purpose of usage of balconies. So I don't want to go any deeper on that, but that's been the case in every single city, we have had these discussions, and it's really happy, happy to see that many cities have approved throughout the country this balcony system to be used. So thanks, thanks a lot for your consideration, really happy to work with the city of Vancouver.
Thank you so much. You don't have any questions, sir? So that's it for this evening, and thanks for participating. I am going to just remind folks that if you want to speak to this item, please call toll-free one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code five nine two eight one four two hashtag. That's one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by code five nine two eight one four two hashtag, and that will put you on the speakers list. If you missed that number, it's on the live stream and on Twitter. Let's see, so we're going to move to our next speaker, who is Elizabeth Murphy?
Hello.
Just wait for you. Hi there, you've got up to five minutes.
Hello, I'm here, yes, can you hear me?
Great, I can, and I'll start your timer whenever you're ready.
Well, actually, I just want to confirm one thing, Mayor Stewart, if I may. I had signed up as a speaker representing a group, and so I'm assuming that I have eight minutes?
I'm just going to confer with the clerk, I'm not going to start your timer yet, and the clerk, and the clerk says yes, so please go ahead, and up to eight minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Elizabeth Murphy, and I am a resident of Vancouver, and speaking tonight on behalf of the Vancouver Character House Network. The Character House Network is opposed to this rezoning as proposed. We see these as substantive changes, not just text amendments, and request that council refer this draft back to staff for more work after neighborhood-based public consultation with those affected, including our group as stakeholder, and address the concerns raised, including those raised in our letter to council. We have a petition on change.org that calls for more, among other things, to take immediate action to remove from zoning and building code bylaws any biases favoring demolition and new construction over retention. And this is now almost nine thousand, it's at eighty-eight hundred plus papers, signers at the time of writing, and the Vancouver Vanishes Facebook has over thirteen thousand three hundred likes, also as a form of support for retention. So clearly, the public wants to see policies that encourage heritage and character house retention, and the city has programs to encourage this through heritage and character house incentives. However, these provisions continue to be inadequate and are further eroded by substantial bylaw amendments such as these, that are misrepresented as simplification and text amendments. The proposed changes include many parts of the zoning and development bylaw, and zoning schedules that are substantially different, including RARF, RT, RM, MIIC zones, and all put together in one rezoning report for public hearing. We have not been consulted on this and have major concerns as it affects the viability of heritage and character house retention, and far-reaching effects that this has on Vancouver. We are also concerned about the lack of consideration of neighborhood character. Various zoning schedules evolved over time to address specific issues related to each neighborhood. Plus, the rezoning also alters official development plans for downtown, downtown East Side, southeast Granville Slope, central waterfront, and Falls Creek. The rezoning also fails to consider the many community visions and area plans covering neighborhoods across the city, as well as the interim rezoning policy for Kiltsoolano and West Point Gray. The city should be reconsidering any changes to zoning very carefully with substantive public involvement to avoid unintended consequences. There are some proposed changes that allow more flexibility for character house retention that we would support, but there are so many proposed changes overall that it's difficult to see how they all fit together without a substantive consultation process. Many of the changes give more development rights and discretionary powers for variances to the director of planning for new construction, without having to go to the Board of Variances and, Board of Variance, and changes to the role of the Development Permit Board. That will make it more, these will make it more advantageous for demolition and new construction, that undermines retention options. This puts more pressure on land values and undermines affordability and environmental objectives of reducing waste and GHG emissions from embodied energy. The retractable glass balconies on, in towers, in RM zones, as Michael Geller and others have spoken about today, is a different issue than balcony encroachments into front yards in RS and RT zones. These need different considerations and separate reports. The RM zones could come forward earlier with the glass balconies, and, you know, certainly it sounds like there is support for these kind of changes, but there are so many other things that are wrapped into this that really need to be more clearly and transparently considered. Encroachments into front yard setbacks for new construction undermine streetscape character and puts increased development potential above urban design considerations, and increases the building footprint while reducing permeable surfaces. So this is a very different issue than what we're talking about mostly in this public hearing, which is about just glass enclosures of tower development balconies. So therefore, I request that council refer this draft back to staff for more work after neighborhood-based public consultation with those affected, including our group as a stakeholder, and address the concerns raised. So I think I'm a little under eight minutes, but I just went to, how much time do I have?
You have a couple more minutes, but you also have questions from councillor Hardwick and councillor Carr.
Okay, fair enough. So maybe I'll just go to questions then.
Okay, thanks so much. Councillor Hardwick, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Murphy, for being here. Everyone else, we've heard here, of course, has been talking about glass patios and decks, all of which I think are, we are enthusiastic about, but what I'm getting from your commentary and from reading the report is that, you know, that's the shiny neat stuff, and maybe some of the process redesign on a superficial level, but as I've, as councillors have heard me say many times, the devil's in the details, and there is the law of unintended consequences. I take your point about heritage retention and the importance of supporting that at a detailed level, so let me ask you this. Can you see, you know, there's a lot of stuff that's been included in this, there's in this document, in this request, there's a lot of enthusiasm, for example, about this patio glass portion of it, but it's only a small portion of what we're talking about here. Are there parts of this document, and I'm, knowing you, I'm imagining you've gone through it with considerable detail, are there parts of it that you think are good? Are there improvements in the processes that you think are good? Are the things that we can take away here as a council that... Are the things that we can take away here as a council that we can get behind while at the same time revisiting in more detail some of the issues that you've raised?
I think that your point is well-taken. And this is really what I'm trying to say, too, is that there are good things in this report. There are things that I think, certainly, I've been on many different sides of the issue, and I've had to take projects through, you know, planning and development processes. And I understand how important it is to streamline those processes and to make them more user-friendly, so I'm very supportive of that in principle. But I think that what we're talking about in here is much more substantial than text amendments. And these issues about balconies, for instance, and encroaching front porches into front yards in RT and RS zones, and, you know, how, they're just so different. Everything in here is very different. And also, all of the changes to the powers of the, for discretion of the Director of Planning and having less going through the Board of Variance or the Development Permit Board, both which have an oversight view. I think that these are substantial things that need more thought and need more explanation and need to be considered on their own. So I think what needs to happen is that none of this is ready to be approved today because it needs to be taken apart and dealt with in its different sections, not as a big omnibus thing. I mean, this is what many people have been critical of the provincial and federal governments of bringing forward things that are completely unrelated altogether in one bill. This is the municipal equivalent to that. And it needs to be taken apart and dealt with on those zones that are similar to each other and much more detail, all the stakeholders that are related to those separate parts, then coming back with a public hearing on those separate reports. This is too much. It's too much for council to get their head around. It's too much for the public to get their head around. And we're going to throw the baby out with the bathwater, and we're going to lose a lot of the context that has evolved over time. Like, many of these zoning bylaws are different because they were created that way over time. They evolved for the reasons that different neighborhoods need different solutions to their housing issues. And we can't just turn it all into vanilla. We have to have the variances, the variances of why these zones are different. Some of them are for a reason, some of them are not. And I would agree that, you know, certainly, there's some processes that the city do too long, but it all needs to be taken apart. What I'm trying to say is, I don't think anything here is ready to go.
And you have a question from, that's okay, councillor Carr has questions.
Yes, thanks so much for coming to speak to us, Ms. Murphy, or being on the line. I'm going to go through a couple of points that you made. You talked about how this set of changes affects the viability of heritage house retention. Can you point me to some of the specifics that affect the viability? Like, where's the language or what are the specifics around that are egregious from your point of view on that?
Well, okay, this is what is difficult for me, is that I have not been part of any kind of consultation process. And so I don't know the details of what is all in here. And I've gone through it as best I can and analyzed what I can, but there's overlapping things. And I think it's not just one clause or one little thing that you take out here and there. I think it's the concept of trying to move too much towards outright zoning and away from conditional zoning. And conditional zoning is very much a part of what makes retention options viable. And when you, part of it is balancing those things out so that the retention option and the new build is relatively equal with some benefits towards retention or else people aren't just going to do it, especially currently, there's no disincentives for demolition in the, any of the RS zones and some of the RT zones. So anyways, I think that what we need to do is not be, like, I'm particularly concerned about this whole program being geared towards all of the zones across the city being lumped into the same program without these things being considered separately. And it really isn't viable to bring forward a big rezoning like this over so many districts. It's not just one clause. It's not just one little thing we can point to. It's the whole concept. It needs to be redesigned.
So Ms. Murphy, if some of those changes that are done throughout zoning districts throughout the city are actually just making changes so that the language is consistent. I mean, in one of the introductory comments that Mr. Kelly made, he said it's really one of the reasons for doing this is to make sure that the inconsistencies that exist in language are actually rectified so it's easier to understand. I didn't understand that that meant...
Yeah, I agree that some of that is about language, but some of that is not just about language. Some of it is actually taking, making changes and then making it consistent throughout all of the bylaws. For instance, the issues around the authority of the Director of Planning, that's a substantive change. And then making all of the language consistent with that change. So there's substantive changes being made and then making the language consistent with that. Sometimes, yes...
Okay, I'll ask a question about that. Go ahead.
Sure.
Sometimes...
But it is, you know, and I'm sure that there are some things that, yes, it is just a matter of what would be considered a text amendment. But most of this is not. Most of this is text amendments that are related to a substantive change.
Okay, I will ask that. I will ask what are the substantive changes? It's a good question to pose.
Well, everything to do with the balcony issue is substantive. Okay, I'll put it that way.
Okay.
That's substantive.
Okay, I'll ask what other substantive changes that there are. You also said that...
Just thirty seconds.
Yep, that there are unintended consequences, particularly in terms of considering local area plans. Can you give me some examples of that?
Well...
And we just did just ten seconds left.
Okay, how about taking the extra two minutes that I gave up out of my eight minutes?
Sorry, can't do that. Good try, though. But you do have another question from councillor Dominado. But before I go there, I just to remind other folks who want to speak to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 5928142 hashtag. And with that, we'll move on to councillor Dominado. For up to five minutes, please go ahead, councillor Dominado.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Merron, and thanks, Ms. Murphy, for being here this evening. I actually wanted to follow up on the question, slightly different take. You had mentioned, as councillor Carr mentioned, that these changes affect the viability of character home retention. And I was looking at page twelve of the report, and it talks about relaxation of regulations, and it's very specific. It says that we would be basically consolidating, aligning the language, and that there would be a clause there that would enable the Director of Planning to vary specific regulations to accommodate the retention of a character house. And in reading that, my takeaway was that there's actually some benefits that here, the ability to vary regulations to retain a character home, and that's my sort of understanding, sort of the perspective you might be bringing here. So I was trying to understand, how is that a bad thing?
Well, and that's one of the things, actually, that I mentioned that I do support. I do agree that there needs to be more flexibility. But again, the devil is in the details because it doesn't only, like, those kinds of discretionary powers are not only for the retention of a character house. There's also a lot of increased ability and discretion regarding new construction, too.
Okay, okay, well, thanks for clarifying that. I appreciate that.
And also, too, you know, the thing about shifting of authority to the Director of Planning, what that means is that less projects then go to the Board of Variance or the Development Permit Board. Now, sometimes, that may be advantageous, definitely, to move things along. And sometimes, there are things that, you know, it wouldn't make sense to deal with in that way. But then, we have to be careful because that's a very slippery slope. Because the Board of Variance, for instance, was something that was put in place to allow for the public and those who were affected to have a say in changes that are made of a discretionary nature. And because of those allowances in our bylaw, it just allowed for that. Now, about ten years ago, they removed the third-party appeals to the Board of Variance, and that caused a lot of problems throughout Vancouver. But the role of the Board of Variance is important, and it shouldn't be necessarily eliminated for things that may be substantive and may also be an issue for the, you know, how these things are dealt with. So there's a fine line to, you know, expediency, but without necessarily removing democracy and more democratic processes. Same with the Development Permit Board and having input from the Development Permit Board rather than having variances automatically given at the, by the Director of Planning. So these are public processes that are being watered down, and I think we have to think about that. That's substantive, and that needs to be thought of very carefully, not as a text amendment. But that whole principle should be addressed in a separate report before you start, you know, making all the changes in all the related zoning bylaws that would be a text amendment, once you agree on the substantive changes that you're considering. Like, I think what we're doing here is we're missing a step. We're missing the process around dealing with the substantive choices that we make on issues, and then going to text amendments to address those things that we agree to...
We're just coming up on five. Yep, that's five minutes. Thanks so much for your time. And that's it for questions for you, Ms. Murphy. Thanks very much for calling in today. And now, thank you. And I'm going to move to, let's see, so just ask the clerk if there's anybody on the line while I call for the first time. And three calls for any additional speakers. Please call 1-833-353-8610, followed by code 5928142 hashtag to get on the speakers list. And I'll just check with the clerk. Do we have anybody on the line?
Moderator, do we have anybody else on the line?
Yes, this is the city moderator speaking. We do appear to have one person that may be interested in speaking. I just need one moment to check.
Thanks so much. While you're checking, while you're checking, I will... Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so any additional speakers wishing to address mayor and council on Agenda Item One, please press star one now. Okay, mayor, there doesn't appear to be any response to that, so there are no additional speakers on the line. They may have just called in to...
Okay, thanks so much. I'm going to call then a second time. If there's anybody who wants to speak to this item, please call toll-free 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 5928142 hashtag to get on the list. And I'm going to call, I'm going to actually check, see if anybody is on the line, maybe check with the moderator. I'm going to call for the final time, and perhaps... Okay, go ahead, moderator.
So there does not appear to be any additional speakers at this time?
Okay, I'm going to come right back to you because I'm going to read out my final call. If anybody wants to speak to this item, please call 1-833-353-8610, followed by code 5928142 hashtag. That's my third and final call, and just one last check with the moderator if anybody else is on.
There does not appear to be any additional speakers on the line. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you so much. So seeing there's no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. We'll move on to hearing any closing comments by staff and then questions from councillors, and then move on for our decision. So does staff have any closing comments they'd like to make?
Good evening, council. It's Mark Daggasini, manager of the Regulation Redesign Project. Just to give a couple of points or to address a couple of points that were raised by the speakers. First, on the retractable screens for the balconies. Staff are proposing to look at balconies and enclosed balconies, and we need to understand the implications of this system as well as other regulations that might apply. During council discussion, the issue of FSR exemptions were brought up, as well as implications of the building bylaw. And we think we need to have a holistic look at all of those matters and then come back to you in our next round of changes with a response to that specific task. In relation to the impacts on, or potential impacts of the changes on character houses, the regulations, as was noted, actually provides greater flexibility for all character houses. The specific regulation would not apply to new construction. It is specific to character houses, just to be clear. And we think that that will make it more consistent across the, excuse me, the city and across zoning districts to enable more character house retention where owners want to do that. Respecting changes to council or director of planning authority in regards to both the Development Permit Board or the Board of Variance, the provisions already exist in the zoning district schedules, and the amendments that we're proposing actually spell out the conditions under which the Director of Planning or members of the Development Permit Board can determine when an application goes to the Development Permit Board. So we think that's an important aspect about transparency and consistency and making sure that everyone knows when applications go to the Development Permit Board or the Director of Planning. Lastly, on the, excuse me, the Board of Variance, the issue has been that a lot of applications, or there have been applications in the past, that the Director of Planning is not able to approve even though they would like to approve. And during the presentation, there was the example of the triangular lot that could not accommodate an addition. In those cases, the applicant has to submit a fee as well as wait four to six months to get to the Board of Variance for a decision when the Director of Planning, if they could, would have approved that application. So really, the intent here is very explicit. It's around unnecessary hardship only, and that's been defined and included in the amendments brought forward to you. And only in those instances would the Director of Planning be making decisions or making approvals. It provides some flexibility to make decisions more quickly and streamline processing. In other cases, the Board of Variance appeals are still available to applicants if they so choose to go down that approach. Um, so those are the closing comments. We'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thanks so much, uh, Council. I've just been reminded that I also need to, uh, close the receipt of public comments, uh, so I'm gonna do that now and then now I'm gonna move on to, uh, questions for staff. I've got, uh, Councilor Kirby Young. Questions up to five minutes for staff.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question's probably for the Director of Planning and it's related to balconies. No surprise, something I've asked about quite a bit. Um, and I think it's, I think COVID has really shown us how important they can be in terms of mental and physical health, um, and livability. So if, if Council wanted to proceed with, um, directing staff to look at balconies and recognizing that there's a fair amount, um, that has to go into that from a review of language, regulatory changes, um, would that be possible through an amendment that would direct staff to bring back necessary bylaw changes to Council for referral to a future public hearing?
Uh, yes, I think it would be in general. We're just going back and forth right now with our staff and, and law to, um, settle on, on the right wording to achieve that. We don't have a substantive objection here. I think as Marco described a moment ago, we just wanna make sure that the definitions are, um, foolproof, if you will, in terms of, um, uh, misinterpretation, abuse, misunderstanding. Um, I mean, uh, fully enclosed balconies were excluded, uh, were not excluded, um, for reasons because they became just interior rooms essentially. The, what you heard tonight from Mr. Geller was the hybrid model as he described it. It's something new and we, we would just like the time to investigate that and decide what are the right words to, um, to achieve the, the concept there and so.
Okay.
We, we bring that back and probably would be subject to, as a part of the package, would probably be subject to a new public hearing, is my understanding from law.
Okay, but if the direction was general for staff to pursue that and then to determine what the def- they would do, you would do the work to determine what the definition of a retractable balcony is and all the sort of.
Correct.
Associated specifications, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, um, and then on there, do you share, um, sort of administrative staff share the perspective and the benef- um, that we heard from speakers around the benefits including noise attenuation, wind, um, alleviation, um, guarding against particulate matter? Would you say that those are, are fair benefits as we're looking at, at balconies and modernizing our regulations?
Yeah, those are certainly considerations. I think what we, what we have to sort of square it with is, um, uh, is that just part of a building's, uh, non-excluded floor area and therefore usable, but, but, uh, that really the, um, the issue of being called here is whether it's excluded from a floor area calculation, the otherwise livable space in the building or not. Um, and, and so I think that's part of what we just, uh, need to wrestle with, but certainly the benefits people were talking about tonight are, uh, desirable and, and reasonable, um, for urban living. That's not the question. The only question is whether it's excluded or not excluded floor area.
Okay, but, and, and on that note, in, in your experience, Mr. Kelly, which I know is deep, um, do you find that they can't, that balconies in increasingly urban areas when you start to suffer from more and more noise pollution do, do not get the use that they could, um, because of those impacts and those factors?
I think that's true for many people and then sort of depending on, it can be location specific, of course, but yeah, in many, many locations that is true.
Which, which may bring up the question of, of why you have the expensive building and I guess somewhat like excess parking stalls unless they're done in a way that they're actually, you know, a substantial benefit.
Yeah.
Do balconies, um, that are not used, do they add significantly to costs of buildings if they're not really utilized fully due to some of the factors we've spoken about?
Uh, they can add cost. They're also desirable generally, um, and therefore add to the value, uh, of the building and, and those are desirable for purchasers. Now, that may not turn out to be the case every day of the year, but in general, that cost is accommodated in the, uh, the value of the unit.
Okay, great, thanks. I'll leave it there in case I need another question later to save some time. Thank you.
Sorry, is I mute there? Uh, Councilor Carr, up to five minutes whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, my first question, um, is around the, uh, some of the comments, uh, or related to one comment that, uh, Ms. Murphy made in, in, uh, speaking to us. And that was her statement that this, um, uh, the changes in this, uh, report move away from conditional zoning to outright zoning, um, which will decrease the retention option for, uh, a character homes. Can you ta- point to me where that might be in this report? I didn't see it or, yeah.
I think it would be best if Marco or Heather answer that question for you.
Thank you.
Yes, this is Marco D'Agostino here. There are no changes that actually change, uh, or propose to make amendments from conditional to outright in, in the amendments before you, Council.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, and in fact, what are the substantive changes? That was another comment maybe of Ms. Murphy, that there are a number of substantive changes. Um, I know that in the introduction to this, Mr. Kelly went through how this whole report talks about clarity and remo- reducing inconsistencies and it's not policymaking. So, um, is it just the balcony section that are substantive changes or are there other substantive changes?
So, so in our view, there are, the, the changes aren't as substantive, um, but there, there are multiple changes and, and it's a necessary function, um, because of the bylaw that we have in a number of districts. So, um, it just, for example, if we're introducing the porches, decks and balconies definitions, we've got to introduce them into all the zoning district schedules. So that's where you see, um, multiple, multiple amendments, but it's to introduce more clarity and consistency throughout the bylaw and that's resulting in the substantial amount of changes that are in front of you.
Okay, and are some of those, um, uh, porches, for example, new to some district schedules? In other words, they weren't there before and now they are in those district schedules?
Uh, so sections three, four and five, for example, the content as it was previously has been reorganized, so not necessarily new, all of it, but reorganized. There are some, um, exemptions, um, in the front yards that are new, uh, and then the new, the new parts are the definitions, um, obviously for the porches, decks and balconies.
Right, okay. Um, uh, the, um, report, uh, uh, does vary, um, or do, how does it vary, uh, the options to retain in character homes? Um, is there greater flexibility, for example? Uh, it seemed to me that that was on page 12, uh, but I'm not, you know, I, I just wanna know if, if there is language that actually makes it easier to retain character homes?
Yes, there is. Um, the, the proposal includes a, a broad, uh, um, authority for the Director of Planning to vary, um, any regulation other than use or density when it involves a character house.
Okay, um, yeah, okay, that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you, and, Councilor Dominado, up to five minutes, please.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor, um, and, and to staff, um, thank you for the thorough presentation and report. Um, just following on, uh, not just the speakers, but also we, we did receive, um, quite a lot of correspondence just today, um, alone and, and what struck me in reading the correspondence, um, was, uh, concerns that there were some really sweeping changes taking place in the, this, uh, in terms of rezoning. Um, and, um, I know that the, um, Director of Planning addressed that early on, but I'm wondering if in future there's an opportunity to present this information in a different way and, and I know that a redlined version was presented, but the redlined version is like hundreds of pages long. And I'm wondering if there is a way to present the changes in a table for, for consumption of the public to make, just simply to break it down in terms of the changes and the differences and the rationale. I know that some of it is addressed in the briefing note, um, and I'm just wondering if that's something that we've given some thought to and, and just to make it a little, uh, easier to follow and, um, because there's a lot of information, there's a lot of documentation, uh, presented.
So just, uh, yes, we, we can consider bringing forward more, um, smaller pieces of, of work, um, if that's, if that's Council's desire in the future.
I, I think my main question is more about presentation. I'm a, I'm a big visual person for context. I'm a visual learner and I, um, you know, the report itself was 20 pages long, then there was all different bylaws and, and, and so I'm wondering, like physically, is there a way that we can present the information in a different way, both for the benefit of Council but also for the public? Um, and, and, and so that's the question. It's not about necessarily bringing in in smaller chunks, but it's how we present it and actually put it out to the public. I think that was what I sort of saw in some of the, is, is people weren't really specific about what their concerns were in the, or some of the correspondence. It was just that there are these sweeping changes and, and, and so to me, it seems maybe we could look at how we present the information.
I'll, I'll just say, I think it's a good suggestion, Councilor Dominado, and we can certainly take that into consideration. It would also help in the Council report in illustrating at a high level before you get into the, the details of all of the content. Um, it, it's a good suggestion. We'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. Um, okay, so I think that's it for questions and let me just go to my script here. Right, so I think we can go right to, um, we can write to the decision. Can I have somebody move this? Still moved, right? Okay, uh, sorry, Councilor, second.
Second, Councilor Kirby Young.
Okay, I heard Councilor Kirby Young, so that's seconded and, uh, we'll move to debate. I have Councilor Dominado. I'm just gonna reset your, Councilor Dominado, do you have anything to say to this?
Uh, no, not this time, thanks.
Okay, actually, I have to move over to the main queue. Sorry about that. Uh, Councilor Kirby Young, if you wanna put yourself back on, please go ahead. Okay, Councilor Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I'd like to, um, just in the interest of being efficient, I'd like to just proceed with an amendment that I have sent in to the clerks and Council and I apologize for several emails and the wordsmithing of language. Um, I believe it's appeared on the screen there and it's, it's really, um, zeroing in on balconies and this is something that has been on my mind, um, quite a bit, um, prior to COVID, but particularly exacerbated by COVID in terms of livability and oftentimes walking around the city and seeing how many of them, um, are not used. Um, and, and also too, how increasingly noisy it is in the city, um, and people are living in closer quarters, um, and there's a lot of urban activity in our environment. Um, and so I think that the points by a number of speakers around how some flexibility in the design of those balconies and, and looking at retractable options can really address a lot of factors in livability to particulate matter and noise and wind pollution. Um, and I think we can probably all attest to feeling a bit of that, having, working, been working at home for several months. So the spirit of the amendment not to, um, recognize as a very regulatory process is a simple one to, um, ask staff to do the work to look at permitting retractable balconies and then bring forward to Council for consideration, um, and referral to a future public hearing, uh, conversant with the process that we need to follow. So that is the amendment.
Thanks so much. Do we have a seconder for that?
Second, Councilor Dominado.
Okay, thanks so much. I am going to, uh, did I do this right? We, yes, the motion's moved. Okay, and so I've got an amendment queue here if anybody wants to speak to it. Just checking with the clerk. I think I did get a seconder, so I think we're, we're good. Uh, so that's, in case, I, uh, think I can call a vote on this. There's no other speakers.
Mayor, if I can get a vote assist in favor, it's Council by.
Thanks so much. Just waiting for the, yeah, it's just being triggered now, so I'll ask councilors to vote and Councilor Fry would like a vote assist in favor. There we go.
And point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, it's Councilor Dejanova, if I could also get a vote assist in favor.
Absolutely, thank you. Those have been marked and, uh, Council, that's passed unanimously and if I could have, uh, the clerks just pull that voting, uh, up on the screen so people can see that and then we'll move back to the, uh, move back to the main queue. Okay. Great. Okay, Councilor Kirby Young, was there anything else?
Um, I'll just take the opportunity to provide a couple of comments on the report tonight and appreciate all the emails that Council did receive from, um, a number of, of residents, um, particularly, um, in West Point Gray. Um, and I appreciate the concerns. I also am, um, appreciative of the clarifying comments provided by the Director of Planning around the regulatory redesign and the fact that while this is a, a sort of a bulky report, um, a lot of it is administrative in terms of cleaning up our regulations. I think that this Council, um, has really committed, um, I don't think any councilors would necess- would disagree with the goal of streamlining our regulations to make it easier for people to do business with the city and particularly to work their way through these types of processes. Um, and so when I hear, for example, um, the change to enable the Director of Planning to exercise discretion for a hardship situation and the example of the very narrow lot was used at the back, um, that might have precluded somebody, um, from being able to do an addition, um, that could increase livability or some gentle, um, infill in a neighborhood, um, gentle infill density, I think that's a very positive one, particularly when it was cited that it would save a four to six month wait to go to, um, for a variance and an additional fee of $2,300 and I think we're trying to make sure that we can deliver housing in a very reasonable timeline and as affordably as we can in the city. So I look at, at this in context of the ongoing work that, um, Council has committed to of streamlining regulations. Um, I recognize that sometimes it is a lot to digest, but, um, for those folks that did write in, I, I don't feel this is, these are wholesale sweeping zoning changes. They are administrative updates as has been clarified, um, by staff and I recall that when we referred this item, I counsel a public hearing, there were some clarifying questions, um, of that nature and I think that's always important to do, but I do really wanna appreciate and thank everybody that has written in, um, but I will be supporting the report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilor Carr?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, thank you staff for the presentations and, um, and I wanna thank you too for the redlined version that you did, um, that you did provide. I'll go into that in a second. Um, that was a lot of work, I'm sure. Uh, and to thank all the speakers for coming, uh, to speak to us tonight. Um, my fir- the first point I really was listening to around, um, especially, um, Ms. Murphy in, in her presentation, is really, are these sweeping changes? Um, so I, I, you know, kind of reviewed the report, um, on that basis and my notes that I'd taken on that basis and I, I really don't believe that there are sweeping changes. I really do support, um, staff's initiative on this to, um, to, to be more consistent in the language used, um, and the way that, uh, that the bylaws are, the zoning bylaws are presented from district to district, um, so that they are more simple to understand, more simple to utilize and, um, and, and that's a good thing. We've heard a lot of complaints from people around how, um, inconsistent or how difficult, um, our, our bylaws are, uh, to deal with. Uh, when, when really most of the, most of the, um, work, um, in applying the bylaws is very similar. Um, there, there are myriad changes. There's no doubt about that. There's lots and lots. That's why the redlined version was requested by us, um, at referral. And so I, um, I definitely sympathize with everyone who have, uh, those people who wrote in to us and, and the one speaker, Ms. Murphy, tonight, who said, you know, it looks like there are a lot of changes and there are a lot of changes, but as I say, not for the vast majority of them substantive. Um, I also very much appreciate Councilor Lisa Dominado saying, we, could, could we not do this in smaller chunks? Um, I support that, um, moving forward as, as, uh, I, I think something simpler for all of us to understand at the council table and for the public to understand. On the substantive issue of character homes, um, I, uh, I think staff very much clarified, um, that the, the provisions in, in the changes actually allow for greater flexibility, uh, which will increase the, the, uh, opportunities for character home retention. I read those sections again and, and I really feel that, um, that that's good and I have been concerned about character home retention, so I am happy to see those particular changes. So, um, all in all, I am supportive, um, of these changes.
Thanks so much. Uh, Councilor Harwick, up to five minutes.
Yes, thank you. I've put in an amendment to the clerk and circulated.
Okay.
I just wanna say that, uh, there is a lot to like in this, uh, this report, um, and I concur with Councilor Dominado and what Councilor Carr just said about smaller chunks. I applaud Councilor Kirby Young's addition as I think that the whole discussion around glass and patios is, is something that, uh, everybody can get behind, but there remains concern, uh, in particular about RS and RT zones, um, which, uh, Ms. Murphy did, uh, describe at some length. So this is why I was asking the question, you know, is, is there something, if, if there's things in here that we're particularly concerned about, can we tease them out, um, and deal with them separately, uh, while moving forward with, uh, the bulk of what's contained in this report, uh, together with the revisions? And so that, oh, I spelt therefore. And so that, oh, I spelled therefore wrong, forgive me.
We can, we can just correct that.
Thanks, it's a, it's a, that's what I was trying, as I, I was trying to synthesize again through, um, listening to everybody and, and you know what it's like trying to, uh, keep on top of it. But the intent really is here is to take very specifically the RS and RT zone pieces, which are the ones that are going to affect the, the areas of concern, uh, as expressed. And I think, um, while still moving ahead with, uh, the bulk of, of what is, uh, you know, forms the bulk of the report and of course would include the amendment, uh, from Counselor Kirby Young.
Thank you. Uh, do we have a seconder? Oh, wait a second. I've got a note from the clerk. Uh, can we just hold there, council? I'll come right back to you. Uh, just checking council to see if this amendment may trigger another public hearing, and we'd like you to have that information. So I'm just coming back to you shortly. We're just checking with law. Still checking council?
My timer's been going, Mr. Mayor, throughout, just FYI.
Sorry for that. Uh, council, we're going to need a slight recess, so I'm just going to, uh, let's see, it is 7:53. I'll just ask that we return back at eight o'clock. That should give us enough time and just to consult with law. So just stretch your legs for a sec and, uh, come back at eight o'clock. Thank you. To me, and the advice we're getting to legal is that the, um, the bylaws are not written in a manner that the RS and RT parts can be exercised. So there's no way that, uh, they're not written in a way that we can, we can take those, uh, just those zones out so that if we wanted this, uh, to be done, we should refer the whole report back. And then we'd have to have a new public hearing, uh, that would, would be required to consider these changes. So that's the advice from law is that, uh, this is impossible. We need to refer it back with instructions. Okay, so I'm just going to proceed and I'm still looking for a seconder, uh, for this motion.
Under those circumstances, uh, Mr. Mayor, is it possible for me to withdraw and, uh, re, resubmit? Oops. Um, I have something that I think will solve that problem. I'm just trying to, uh, respond to, uh, the clerk. Just bear with me for one minute, please.
Well, I'm going to start your timer. You can certainly withdraw it because it wasn't seconded, but I'm, I'm, you still have the floor and I'm just going to restart your clock. Oh, sorry, and I did have, I'm not going to start it because it was running there for a bit, so I'll give you another, another minute.
Sure, I'm just trying to get it to the right version of, of sending it to the clerk. Denise is, right, I'll try this one. Hopefully that will work. I've just sent that, uh, sorry, I'm just. Got so many windows open as I'm sure everybody else does.
Yes, I'm going to start your timer now.
Can, uh.
About a minute and a half.
Denise, uh, Swanson, confirm receipt of that and.
I'll just ask the clerk, uh, have you received the, uh, amendment?
Yes, we, we just received it, so we're reviewing now.
Thank you.
Okay. Whoa, okay. It's a lot of typing.
Uh, it's only, no, that's actually from the.
Oh, I see, okay.
It, it's just the yellow, just the yellow bits.
Okay. Did you want to say anything to this at all, Counselor Hardwick?
Yeah, I, I, I was sort of anticipating, um, the, your concerns or le, legal's concerns and thought that, um, by just dealing with the, the parts that are very specifically to, to deal with, um, the RS and RT zones with respect to these areas, um, would be sufficient to overcome the concerns that were expressed.
Okay, and you just have 15 seconds left to your timer, anything else?
Um, no, but my intent is, as I described before, was to ensure that the process doesn't come to a grinding halt. That's not my intention. I embrace what is being done here. I'm just trying to find a, 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 a middle path, as it were, to be able to address these issues that are still of, uh, su, of concern to the community.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, I will.
Second by Counselor Carr.
Okay, Counselor Carr.
Oops.
Uh, go ahead, Counselor Carr.
Yeah, I think that that is a subs, the, the, what I, um, took to be the single, um, real substantive issue that has been raised, um, through, uh, letters that we've received from council as well as this speaker, um, the final speaker. So, uh, I think, uh, if that is feasible to do, um, and I'm sure that you're checking on that, Mr. Mayor, uh, I think taking that one section, uh, or those one set of recommendations out, which, um, staff admitted were also, um, on the, on the more substantive level because very little of all of this is substantive. This piece is, um, that, uh, that I can support this going back, uh, for further consultation with the public.
The, uh, the clerk informs me it is the same issue. It's that it, it's, we, we can't selectively, uh, the, yeah, so these are different than motions at councils and committees is that it's kind of, we either refer, I mean, we can, I guess we can add things like we did with the, uh, you know, with the, the instructions for an extra bylaw, which is not connected to this bylaw. So, um, we need to, to either refer the whole thing back or, uh, pass it. That's the advice I'm getting from legal and it, it does make some sense because we went through, this went through an entire public hearing process is one thing. So it needs to go back. It would have, the whole thing would have to go back through the public hearing process.
Well, this is the public hearing.
Yes, but remember all the consultation, everything that's happened would have to be done all over again.
Uh, well, that's been one of the, the big issues here that, that has been expressed. Is it possible then to sever?
I don't know. I can check with the severing, um, but at this point, uh, let's see. So I guess what we're, you're hearing is that this amendment as constructed is, would be out of order uh, because it, it either has to be refer the whole thing back to staff to go through the public, you know, to, to make the changes, then refer it through the whole public hearing process where we have the open houses and all those kind of things they were talking about, or we just, we pass it the way it is. Uh, the amendment that was added by Counselor Kirby Young is additional, uh, instructions to staff that do not interfere with the, uh, public hearing process. That's why that was permitted. So I will check and see if we can sever. I'll just check with the clerk.
Thank you.
And we're just checking now on the severing, so I'll get back to you shortly, council about, about that. Counselor Hardwick, do you know what part that you want severed? It's a lot in there. Oh, you're muted, Counselor Hardwick. Sorry. Do you have a specific clause that you want to sever?
Yes, um, B, I believe it, it, BV.
Okay. Just B.
BV. Is it possible to do that? I'm, I'm just really foc, trying to focus on that one section that, that, uh, contains the RS RT. If I can't sever them, I'd like, if I can't sever, i- if I can't strike them from within the, the, as an amendment, then I'd, I'd like to sever it as a clause.
Okay, I will, uh, we'll check and get back to you and see if we can do that, uh, and it's BV.
That's the advice I'm getting from legal, and it does make some sense, because we went through, this went through an entire public hearing process is one thing, so it needs to go back, it would have, the whole thing would have to go back through the public hearing process.
Well, this is the public hearing.
Yes, but remember all the consultation, everything that's happened would have to be done all over again.
Uh, well, that's been one of the, the big issues here that, that has been expressed. Is it possible, then, to sever?
I don't know, I can check with the severing, um, but at this point, uh, let's see, so I guess what you're hearing is that this amendment as constructed would be out of order, uh, because it, it either has to be refer the whole thing back to staff to go through the public, you know, to make the changes, then refer it through the whole public hearing process where we have the open houses and all those kind of things they were talking about, or we just, we pass it the way it is. The amendment that was added by Counselor Kirby Young is additional instructions to staff that do not interfere with the public hearing process, that's why that was permitted. So I will check and see if we can sever, I'll just check with the clerk.
Thank you.
And we're just checking now on the severing, so I'll get back to you shortly, Counselor, about that. Counselor Hardwick, do you know what part that you want severed? It's a lot in there. Oh, you're muted, Counselor Hardwick. Sorry. Do you have a specific clause that you wanna sever?
Yes, um, B, I believe it, B, B.
Okay. Just B?
B V. Is it possible to do that? I'm, I'm just really foc, trying to focus on that one section that, that contains the RS RT.
Okay.
If I can't sever them, I'd like, if I can't sever, if I can't strike them from within the, as an amendment, then I'd, I'd like to sever it as a clause.
Okay, I will, we'll check and get back to you and see if we can do that, and it's BV. an answer. Again, we're just checking, and we'll get back to you, Counselor, as soon as we have an answer. Counsel, so severing is really the same thing as can't be excised. So we're still back to the, and again, it's the special conditions of a public legal charter requirement, and so this is the, we can't take out a part, we have to send it back. So, so that's the answer to your question, Counselor Hardwick. And, sorry, I'm just gonna go back on the queue here. Counselor Carr, you have a couple minutes left? You're on mute.
Sorry, I was, you're right, I just sent in an amendment, um, so I believe the clerk must have it, and my amendment is simply to follow up on the concerns that were expressed by the public who did write in to us and, and one speaker, that, that staff monitor, this would be to add a letter, that staff monitor and evaluate the changes related to porches and balconies, um, in the RT and RS zones over the next twelve months, and report back on any issues. Second.
Thanks so much, I am going to, um, sorry, I had us on the wrong queue there, Counselor, I'm gonna, it's about the same amount of time, Counselor Carr, so, right, so we have that seconded now, I'm gonna go over to the amendment queue, and if anybody wants to speak to this, please go ahead, put yourself on the list. Counselor Hardwick?
Yes, I'd like to thank Counselor Carr for, for the amendment, as we search for a way to make this more palatable to the public. I was searching for something, and since unfortunately my strategies have, have proven out of order or offside, I think this is an elegant solution which I will wholeheartedly support.
Yeah, great, thanks very much, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so we can have a vote on that amendment.
Mayor, if I could get a vote assist, it's Counselor Bly.
Counselor Bly, yes, how would you like to vote?
In favor.
Thanks very much.
Point of privilege, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Deacon O'Bay, the same for me, in favor, please, a vote assist.
Great, thanks, great, okay, thanks very much, Counsel, that passed unanimously, I guess I asked clerk to call up the, put that on the screen so folks can see, there we go, perfect, okay, so we're back to the main queue, Counselor Carr, anything else?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Thanks very much, okay, and I don't see anybody else in the speakers' list, so we could call a vote on this, this staff report as amended twice.
This is Counselor Bly, I'd like to vote in favor with a vote assist.
Thanks very much.
Sorry to sound like a broken record, same, please, in favor.
In favor, okay, great, thanks very much, Counsel, that has passed unanimously, and again, I'm gonna get clerks to pull up the votes, people can see, and we're good. Okay, thank you much, Counsel, we're on to our second piece of business now, which is the rezoning of four eight six West Twenty-Sixth Avenue, and the clerk will now read the application and summary of correspondence.
This is an application by Billard Architecture Incorporated to rezone four eight six West Twenty-Sixth Avenue from RS One District to CD One District to permit the development of a six-story residential building, a building height of nineteen point nine meters and a floor space ratio of two point five one are proposed. No correspondence has been received for this item since referral to public hearing.
Thanks so much, um, let's see, we do have one speaker on the speakers' list, but I'll just remind others, please call one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by code five nine two eight one four two hashtag to get on the list to speak to this item. It's like the shopping network or something, I keep feeling that when I reading these out, this is four eight six West Twenty-Sixth Avenue, and, uh, sure, so if you wanna call in, that's also on the live stream, if you didn't hear the number, we have Tess Monroe from the rezoning center here that has a presentation, and it's, we do have a speaker, so we should probably go ahead with the, with the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel, my name is Tess Monroe, and I'm the rezoning planner for this application. The site shown to outline in red is comprised of one single-family lot zoned RS One. It is located on the east side of Camby Street, within two blocks of the King Edward Cataline Station. East of the site across the lane, lots are designated for three-story townhouses under the Camby Plan. There have been numerous approved rezonings in the area for developments ranging between three and six stories in height, as noted in purple on the map, with several other applications currently in process, shown here in yellow. The lot is currently developed with a single-family home containing one rental unit. As this application includes only one lot for development, the tenant relocation plan policy does not apply. This proposal is being considered under the Camby Corridor Plan, which was adopted in twenty eighteen, following a comprehensive three-phase planning program. The intent of the plan is to guide and enable change, and focuses on providing a range of housing types and affordability levels, including market residential developments, such as the project before you tonight. At this location, shown in red on the map, residential buildings up to six stories in height can be considered. A density range between two and two point five FSR is suggested based on, based on intended urban design performance. The development potential for each site may fall within, below, or above this range. This application responds to the plan by proposing to rezone the site from RS One to CD One, to permit the development of a six-story residential building with a total of twenty-nine strata residential units. Sixty-two percent of the units in the building are proposed as family units, which greatly exceeds the thirty-five percent minimum requirement under the city's family room policy. A maximum height of approximately nineteen point nine meters and an FSR of two point five one are proposed. A city-hosted open house was held in September twenty nineteen, and was attended by seventeen people. Response to this, this application was minimal, and staff received a total of eight responses. Feedback on this application included support for the proposed height and comments on the building design and facade, concerns related to building, building massing in relation to the neighboring building. In response to these comments, staff reviewed the building design in the neighborhood context. The plan allows specific consideration for longer building forms for sites on the northern end of a block. The intent is to create residential entries along both Camby and Twenty-Sixth Avenue, and provide a better transition to the townhouses permitted across the lane. The shadowing on the neighboring property is minimal, and the form aligns with the intent of the bill form guidelines in the plan. This application generates approximately one point eight million in CACs to be allocated towards the community benefits outlined in the Camby Corridor Public Benefit Strategy. Further, a DCL of approximately seven hundred thousand would be anticipated. In summary, this proposal meets the intent of the Camby Corridor Plan. If approved as part of the Recart Smart Vancouver Initiative, in response to COVID-19, this project will contribute to approximately a hundred and two new onsite and offsite construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thanks so much for that presentation, and the applicant team, would you like to say anything at this point, or just ask, answer questions?
No, we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much, we're now going to move, oh, sorry, any questions at this point, have you, Counselor Kirby Young, did you wanna ask a question to staff or the applicant?
I'd like to ask one of the applicant, please.
Please go ahead.
It's a fairly simple one, and it's about the architectural form and expression, and I'm just wondering if you can describe what the noodle-like features are on the building.
Yes, of course. Of course, when we started this project, and we found out that Arno Mattis, the Arno Mattis project next door was already rezoning, I'm a big fan of Arno Mattis, I think, I think he's an amazing architect, and I really like the vertical aspect of that building. And also, that building is, as you're aware, is very monochromatic white, so what I felt we had to do in, in, in this building was to build a contrast in an architectural language that, that mirrored in a, sort of in a reverse way, the neighboring project, so our project is heavy in terms of using the, the darker brick, and then, but as it transitions around the corner towards the neighboring building, towards Arno's building, it introduces this, this vertical element, but when I, just using the sort of more curvilinear, more organic feel to it, that is not very present along the Camby Corridor. And then, as you may be aware with our other projects, we, we do introduce color into our projects, and every time we've brought that to the neighborhood associations, they always comment that they like the introduction of color. So this was an opportunity to bring in the vertical sun shading, which is required along the western sides of these buildings, which is what Arno Mattis did on, on their building, to provide that vertical sun shading, and then, but make it, make it a little colorful, make it a little playful, something that the Camby Corridor is sorely lacking in a lot of, lot of areas.
And, and may I ask, what, what type of material that is?
Um, right now, it is, it is a mixture of, of metal panel and tempered glass, that is the, that's the intent at this point.
Okay, intriguing, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions from Counsel, so I will move on to the speakers' list, so we have Aiden, sorry, Adrian Herberts here, just checking to see if he's on line, sorry, or they are on the line.
Hi, Adrian, you are now unmuted, please proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for calling in, you've got up to five minutes, whenever you're ready to start, please go ahead.
I, I will, I'll need much less than five minutes, just like to speak in support of the application, obviously, we need more housing in Vancouver, and the Camby Plan is already an established plan, so, yeah, just like to speak in support, applaud Mayor and Counsel, hopefully for passing and adding more housing, and then also commend the applicant for, uh, taking some creative risk, and, you know, every neighborhood needs some noodles, so nothing wrong with that, so, anyway, thank you very much, and I hope the, hope the application passes.
Thank you so much, I forgot, Speaker, I was supposed to ask your name and whether you're a resident of Vancouver.
Yes, Adrian, and I'm a resident of King Edward and Yukon Street.
That's perfect, okay, thanks very much for your time this evening, and taking the time to participate in our public hearing, thanks so much. Now, Counsel, that, Mr. Adrian, sorry, Mr. Herberts is the only listed speaker, I'm gonna call now to see if there's any other speakers, that's one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code five nine two eight one four two hashtag, and this is the first call for speakers, I just checked now with the, if there's, with the moderator, if there's anybody else on the line that would like to speak to this item.
Hello, Mayor, there is no additional speakers at this time.
Thanks so much, so I'm gonna make my second call, which is for folks to call one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code five nine two eight one four two hashtag to get on the list. That's the second call, I'm just gonna wait for a second, and I'll say one more time, one eight three 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 five three eight six one zero, followed by participant code five nine two eight one four two hashtag to get on the list, and I'll just ask the moderator if there's anybody else on the line to speak to this.
Thank you, Mayor, there are no additional callers at this time for item two.
Okay, thank you so much, so seeing there are no additional speakers, this speakers' list is now closed, and as few or no public comments were received on this item after five AM today, we'll close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments, does the applicant team have any closing comments?
Um, sorry, I'm unmuted, yes, well, I think, thank you very much for, for the time, I think I've heard the best line ever, every neighborhood needs some noodles, so I'm gonna put that on our bio, so thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, staff have any closing comments?
No, we don't have any comment, uh, closing comments, happy to answer questions.
Thanks very much, and I have Counselor Weave on for questions to staff only at this stage, go ahead, up to five minutes, Counselor Weave. He might be on mute.
Um, yeah, first question is, what do we consider as a park connector street public realm treatment that was utilized in the bill form of this building?
Uh, one more time on that one, Counselor Weave, what was considered a...
Yeah, the question is, what is the park connector street public realm treatment that was used as part of the Camby public realm plan on this building?
Okay, and I'll turn that over to staff.
Can we clarify whether the question is related to this site, the, the public realm is further defined through the development permit process?
Okay, it just says on page twelve, it talks about how the treatment of this building will be kind of reflected, as well as the public realm, to reflect a park connector street, so I'm just wondering if that includes increased sidewalks, like what does that look like as part of this project to be part of a park connector street?
Staff, you were suggesting that might be...
Sorry, Counsel, we're just looking to see what section you're referring to.
Okay, section seven on page twelve, and then, I guess the second question is, on projects of this, do we look at have the top two floors a lighter color sometimes to ensure that they don't, the massing looks less, or is that something we don't traditionally look for in projects along the Camby Corridor?
Along Camby Corridor, we do require a setback at the upper two stories, the materiality and architectural expression is further refined through the development permit process, we don't usually comment on that at rezoning, so this building will go through another round of review at development permit for those items.
Okay, and then...
And I'll say one more time, 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 5928142 hashtag to get on the list. And I'll just ask the moderator if there's anybody else on the line to speak to this.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no additional callers at this time for item two.
Okay, thank you so much. So seeing there are no additional speakers, this speakers list is now closed. And as few or no public comments were received on this item after 5:00 p.m. today, we'll close the receipt of public comments and move on to hearing closing comments. Does the applicant team have any closing comments?
Sorry, unmuted. Yes, well, I think, thank you very much for the time. I think I've heard the best line ever, "Every neighborhood needs some noodles." So I'm going to add on our bio. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Staff have any closing comments?
No, we don't have any closing comments. Happy to answer questions.
Thanks very much. And I have Counselor Weeb on for questions to staff only at this stage. Go ahead, up to five minutes, Counselor Weeb. He might be on mute.
Yeah, first question is, what do we consider as a park connector street public realm treatment that was utilized in the built form of this building?
One more time on that one, Counselor Weeb. What was considered a...
Yeah, the question is, what is the park connector street public realm treatment that was used as part of the Canby Corridor public realm plan on this building?
Okay, and I'll turn that over to staff.
Can we clarify whether the question is related to this site? The public realm is further defined through the development permit process?
Okay, it just says on page 12, it talks about how the treatment of this building will be kind of reflected, as well as the public realm, to reflect a park connector street. So I'm just wondering if that includes increased sidewalks? Like what does that look like as part of this project to be part of a park connector street?
Staff, you were suggesting that might be...
Sorry, Counselor, we're just looking to see what section you're referring to.
Okay, section seven on page 12. And then, I guess the second question is, on projects of this, do we look at have the top two floors a lighter color sometimes to ensure that they don't, the massing looks less? Or is that something we don't traditionally look for in projects along the Canby Corridor?
Along the Canby Corridor, we do require a setback at the upper two stories. The materiality and architectural expression is further refined through the development permit process. We don't usually comment on that at rezoning. So this building will go through another round of review at development permit for those items.
Okay. And then, I guess we can't ask questions of the, I guess, final comment would be, I do understand the use of color. I do find that this color kind of dates the building a little bit, but I do like to see the artistic expression that has been delivered. But hopefully, maybe we can look at the colors to look at kind of what would work better in fitting with the Canby Corridor. That's all my questions.
Okay, thanks so much. Did you get the question, the answer to your first question, Counselor Weeb?
Not yet, but it's talking about the streetscape. I just would like to know kind of how, I don't see it in the building or described. So I think that's something I can take offline and look at how we kind of incorporate the buildings to better kind of meet the facade on the 26th Avenue to integrate with a park connector.
Okay. Any answers from staff there or just quick ones? Or is this something that might be addressed through the development permit process?
We're just looking into that answer and we can get back to you on that response.
Okay, great. Thanks so much. Okay, so let's see, I don't see any other questions from council. So do we have somebody who will move this?
Counselor Kirby Young.
Thank you, Counselor Kirby Young. Do we have a second or...
Second, Counselor Carr.
Counselor Carr, thank you. Counselor Kirby Young, over to you for up to five minutes in the debate section.
Thanks. I will be brief, but I feel compelled to speak after asking the noodle question. I do think that there's some terrific housing options that are going into Canby Corridor. I'm in this area a lot and I see it. Like Counselor Weeb, felt that the expression of the building was quite dark, but I realize that that's not sort of the rezoning decision that's in front of us tonight, but I am heartened. And I find that also in the Canby Corridor, that those buildings do have a sort of variation in materials or color. Do seem to be a bit lighter with the density that is going in there. And I sort of probably have that perspective because this is an area that I look at quite a lot. So like Counselor Weeb, I am heartened to hear that there will be a further discussion around that in the next phase of the process. And also too, with, because I'm all first, so something interesting in terms of architectural features or something that can actually feel art-like in the noodles. But you know, I share his comments too around color and I recognize a lot of that is subjective. But expression is really important because we are creating neighborhoods and you want visual interest, but you also want places that people feel good about being in it, feel light and don't feel oppressive. So I'm going to limit my comments to that, but I appreciate the discussion. And it's probably one of my favorite lines from a public hearing so far, but I'm happy to support the project tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Counselor Hardwick, or do you, up to five minutes?
Yes, thank you. It's an interesting project. I just wanted to comment on the presentation and again, it, sorry, is there a little bit of feedback there? There was reference to the Housing Vancouver Strategy and to the Canby Plan. And as I've articulated many times, I'm concerned that we need to be rearticulating these plans going forward. Where we were in 2016 is not where we are in 2020. So for that reason, I just want to be clear why I am going to abstain. And it is not because of the merits of the individual project, which I can appreciate, but rather because I want to make a statement about my concerns about the underlying plans on which all of these are being based. So I just wanted to get that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Swanson. He might be on mute, Counselor Swanson? Counselor Swanson, you might be on mute. That little button doesn't work on the microphone.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can. Go ahead, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I too am really concerned that the Canby Corridor Plan is creating an elite neighborhood. And that that concern is going to be what governs my vote on this. That's all.
Okay. Thank you so much. Counselor Hardwick, you have another four minutes, if you like.
Oh, sorry, that was a holdover.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. That's it for debate, council. I'm going to call a vote on this item.
Could I get a vote assist, Mayor?
Sure, Counselor Bly, yep. And that's how you like to vote.
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dejanova? Vote assist. Counselor Dejanova?
I think I was double muted there. Yes, in favor, please.
Thanks, yeah, that's happening to lots of us tonight. Okay, thanks, council. Just get the clerks to pull that up on screen. The, that passes with Counselor Swanson in opposition. Thanks, council. We're on to our next item, which is rezoning and heritage designation of 3825 West Boulevard. And I'll get the clerk to read this application. Please go ahead, clerks.
This is an application by Formworks Architectural Incorporated to rezone 6825 West Boulevard from RS5 District to CD1 District to permit the development of infill residential buildings and the protection, rehabilitation, and conservation of the existing heritage building. A maximum building height of 12.4 meters is proposed and an overall density of .6 FSR is maintained. Since being referred to public hearing, council has received seven pieces of correspondence in support and seven pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 5:00 p.m. today.
Okay, thank you so much. And I'm just going to let folks know, if you want to speak to this application, you can call 1-833-353-8610, followed by participant code 5928142 hashtag to get on the list. And this number's on the live stream. We have Lex Dominix, Dom-in-ex, Dom-in-ex, sorry about that, from the rezoning center to speak to this. We do have speakers, so we should go through the staff presentation. Just so counselors know, the staff presentation is 13 slides, then the applicant team is also here to speak and they have a larger presentation of 39 slides. So turn it over to Lex Dominix, sorry, I put your name there. If you can help me with the pronunciation, that would be great.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Lex Dominiac, rezoning planner for this application. Can everyone hear me and see my presentation?
We can, thank you.
Great. The site is comprised of one lot in an area zoned RS5. It is located on the west side of West Boulevard between 51st and 53rd Avenue. The Arbutus Ridge, Carisdale, and Shaughnessy Community Vision area. Surrounding the site are detached houses, with many of them pre-1940s character homes. The site is across the street from the Arbutus Greenway and is serviced by frequent transit, frequent transit route along West Boulevard. It is also within a five-minute walk to grocery stores, shops, and other commercial businesses, and within a five-minute walk of the Carisdale Community Center. The subject site indicated by the dotted red outline is quite large, at over 2,600 square meters. This would be approximately six to seven times that of an average single-family lot in Vancouver, which are typically around 400 square meters. It is currently occupied by a single-family house built in 1912, as well as a garage in the north side yard and a tennis court in the rear yard. As you can see from this image, the site is not connected to a lane, with houses in this area backing onto each other. The applicant proposes to rezone the site from RS5 to CD1 for the development of nine market strata residential units. This includes the rehabilitation, protection, and conversion of the existing heritage building and four new infill buildings accessed by a driveway from West Boulevard. The proposal stays within the existing permitted density of 0.60 FSR. This slide provides a sense of the form of development of the retained heritage building and the new infill buildings. The heritage building and infills 1, 2, and 3 each contain two units. Infill 4, also called the coach house, would contain one unit. The existing heritage building, also known as the twist building, still exists in its original condition and requires only minor repairs and upgrades. As part of this application, the interior would be modified to provide for a more modern living arrangement, but otherwise, the project proposes a high level of conservation. As part of the application, council is requested to reaffirm the classification of the heritage building as A-listed, which would correct an addressing error made in a previous attempt to reclassify the site. The proposal is being considered under the Arbutus Ridge, Carisdale, and Shaughnessy Community Vision, which prioritizes the retention of heritage buildings listed in the Vancouver Heritage Register by implementing incentives such as the development of infill housing. The vision also provides general policy direction to allow more infill and duplex housing, if designed to fit into the single-family area, and to permit new housing types on large lots or those which are on or near arterial roads. As stated in the city's updated heritage policies, the Vancouver Heritage Program's long-term goal is to protect as many heritage resources as possible. For this application, a city-hosted open house was held on June 26, 2017, and was attended by 46 people. 14 comment sheets were collected at the open house, and four other pieces of correspondence have been received since then. Feedback included support for the building design and the provision of new housing and housing types for the area. Concerns include worries that the project would not fit in with the surrounding neighborhood, a sense that the proposed density is too much for the area, as well as the potential for increased traffic and reduced parking supply. In response, staff have reviewed the architectural design of the rejuvenated heritage house and the proposed infill buildings, and feel these buildings would maintain the character of the surrounding neighborhood while providing gentle density. While the proposed number of units will increase, the proposed density would still be within the allowable FSR of 0.60 under existing RS5 zoning. Furthermore, the site would see no overall height increase, as the four infill buildings would reach a maximum height of below 30 feet, with the highest building being the existing heritage house at 41 feet. With respect to traffic and parking concerns, staff have reviewed the proposal and do not anticipate meaningful impacts to the existing roadway network. This is supported by the minimal scale of the development, the provision of 15 new onsite parking spaces, and the site's close proximity to frequent transit. Staff also feel that the project's generous setbacks and buffering provided by new onsite trees and the retention of significant mature trees will minimize impacts to neighbors. The owner has offered to conserve and rehabilitate the existing heritage building and to accept the designation of the buildings as protected heritage property. The cost to the applicant of the proposed onsite heritage conservation is estimated at just under 83, 838,000. The application generates approximately 550,000 in CACs, half of which, or 275,000, has been allocated towards the Affordable Housing Reserve, and the other half towards the renewal and renovation of community facilities in and around the Carisdale area. Further, a DCL of approximately 80,000 would be anticipated. In summary, staff are supportive of this proposal, as it meets the intentions of the heritage policies and the Arbutus Ridge, Carisdale, and Shaughnessy Community Vision, by retaining significant homes on the Vancouver Heritage Register, while adding new housing types on a large lot. Furthermore, the proposal addresses the intentions of the Housing Vancouver Strategy, which establishes a target of 10,000 new ground-level homes, such as townhouses, rowhouses, and infill buildings, within the next 10 years. Staff recommend the application be approved, subject to conditions outlined in Appendix B. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer questions. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks so much for your presentation. And I'm just going to ask if the applicant team is here? Is the applicant team here? Might have to unmute. Clerks, do we have the applicant team here?
Yes. Hello?
Great, hi. Thanks for coming tonight. I understand you have a presentation for us as well, and if you could just introduce yourself before you start, that would be great.
My name is Jim Bussey. I'm at Formworks Architectural. And I live in Vancouver at 2108 Maple Street and have held this property for some time now. Very excited about its location. And what we're proposing here is a retention, as was described by Lex, of a major heritage resource that's kept in place in Situ, partially because it's sitting on a very precious stone foundation. And so moving it would not be really part of the cards. Luckily for us, it was sitting in a very good location. And there are two exceptional-sized trees on the property, which we're retaining, a very large sequoia and another very large beech tree. I would call them heritage trees in the area. We are, as was mentioned, lower than the density that's currently allowed because subsequent to this application, the density in the neighborhood went up to .5 FSR, with as, close to this many number of units on this size of property. And are excited to be able to offer an affordable mix in this neighborhood of R-X-supported ground-oriented townhouses.
Thanks. And I'm just going to ask you, are you, do you want us to walk through your slide presentation? Or, I'm sorry, is this part of your slide presentation? I just want to make sure that you're...
Yes, I won't be going through the, I heard with some horror that there was 39 in the presentation. I'm not to go through that many. I don't want to keep you all up.
Okay, no, that's fine. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Rambling on right now, really trying to express our excitement and how much we've tried to fit into the existing neighborhood and the, and the number of interesting points of discussion with the city throughout the couple of years that this has been in through process. Our units are about 2,000 square feet, which we think is highly affordable in the neighborhood. And as I said before, we've gone through a lot of very interesting calculations and interfaces with adjacent neighbors, partially through the meetings that the city's offered and through other means, and feel that this is a very good fit to the neighborhood. At that point, I'll end my presentation and turn it over to any questions that might be coming up.
Okay, thanks so much for coming in today and sharing that with us. We're going to, just going to look here, counsel, Counselor Weeb. We have some questions, either from the applicant or staff at this point. Please go ahead.
And my question's to the applicant. And what is the accessibility of the units recognizing this kind of unique floor plate?
The accessibility?
Yeah.
Well, they're townhouses. The heritage house is about three feet, taken grade at its lowest point. We've not provided any ramps or take into that. The duplexes that surround it are much closer to the grade, and we are considering having elevators roughed in for anyone to take advantage of the vertical three-story levels in these offerings.
So currently, in the designs, they're not visitable, so the bottom floor of the townhouses currently have steps. Is that correct?
For the existing heritage house, it does have existing steps. They're visible in the sense that one could go around to the back and join in to the unit from the lowest level. The rest of them do have visible capabilities, access from approximately grade.
Okay. And I guess, was the proponent, the two large trees, was that part of trying to ensure that this fit with the residential character of...
Absolutely. I mean, this part of the Arbutus land doesn't have that many gigantic... I mean, this part of the Arbutus land doesn't have that many gigantic, and this felt more of a farm-type of property in nature, and the backyard is loaded with fruit trees, which are past, quite frankly. But the two trees that are there are very beautiful, and it would be an absolute shame to cut them down. Not that we'd ever propose doing that, but it was just an obvious thing to retain them.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, thanks. I don't see any other council questions, so I will move to speakers. Let me just look here. Council, we've got Jake Frye, he's here, but just before we move to Mr. Frye, I want to remind people to please call toll-free one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, participant code five-nine-two-eight-one-four-two, to get on the list. And if we wanna move ahead with the first speaker, clerk, and if the speakers could state their full name and whether they're residents of Vancouver, that would be great. Thank you. Over to the clerks.
Jake Frye, you are now unmuted. Please proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, council and mayor, for letting me speak to this. I'm calling in in support of the project. I have sent in a letter outlining, I think, some of the core reasons that I am supporting the project, but I'd like to highlight a couple of things. I am a resident of Vancouver. I live on eighteen-twenty Bayswater, and it's a lovely little twelve-unit heritage complex, little cluster of little Tudor cottages. And I've also been a resident of Carisdale and have some bearing on my support of this. First and foremost, I think as an operator of a business called Small Works, we do a lot of infill housing, and also I'm a co-director of Small Housing DC, which is a advocacy voice work-provence-wide, promoting better land use within neighbourhoods, and by better land use, more efficient, and really as, although it's become a bit of a cliche, supplying sort of the middle metal, missing middle housing. And I think this project's really superlative. We've seen a lot of works from Formworks, a lot of really successful heritage retention projects, and this is in keeping with that tradition of the firm. This brings a lot of things to the neighbourhood that are really important. Having been, lived in Carisdale, it is, it is an environment which is losing a lot of members in their households, just shifting demographics, just the market trends and so forth. These are neighbourhoods which are really depleted of people, and it's at the cost of supplying and providing really good quality housing for Vancouverites. While a lot of the work that we do at Small Housing DC is looking at a different level of affordability, the housing stock that's being supplied here is essentially needed, and it's part of the housing strategy. I think, though, what I'd like to speak to is that, having lived in the area that I do currently in Kitalana, which is Tatla Park, which as I mentioned, is a, it's a little gem, it's a little cluster of Tudor cottages around a courtyard, it's a very special project, and so many people come and look at that, and this is a hundred-year-old structure. And I think what Mr. Bussey's doing in this project is gonna have that kind of long-lasting effect. This is gonna be a special gem. And as we look, and as the planning departments working through alternative strategies of how to supply housing in Vancouver, we will be re-envisioning our single-family neighbourhoods, and they will essentially need to supply more housing. And a project like this is like a vanguard project. It's gonna be exceptional, just judging by past works of this firm, and I think it's gonna be a great example to have in the city, because it's gonna add, in its fruition, something to the neighbourhood, but it's also gonna provide kind of a visionary statement insofar as, as people look, what will the neighbourhoods look like, what can they be like, how can they function? This is gonna be one of those projects where people will turn to and go, wow, this is, if this is what we're talking about, this is something that we all support as a community. And thank you, council, that's all I have to say on the matter.
Thanks so much, and I'm just checking here, whether you have any questions, councillor Dominado, up to five minutes, please go ahead. Might be on mute, councillor Dominado? Councillor Dominado?
Hi, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
I can, please go ahead, up to five minutes.
Thank you for holding my headset. And thanks, Mr. Frye, for joining us this evening. I just wanted to follow up on your comments with respect to sort of better land use, particularly in our single-family areas, and describing this particular project as a visionary statement. Do you see an example like this as being something that could be replicable, not necessarily exactly as that, this project would be proposed tonight, but as a demonstration to others and to sort of inspire others to do similar projects in the city?
Well, I most certainly do, councillor. I mean, this is an atypical lot. Clearly, there are both heritage components to it, and as Mr. Bussey pointed out, some landscaping issues with those trees. But I think what is happening here, and how we're taking one property that suffices the need for one family, and start to look how it can accommodate more households, extended families, people at varying levels of income, that's gonna be so essential, and I think a project that's clearly illustrates what can happen. And I would, I would also comment to that as well, the retention of the heritage factor is so important, both in environmental and the embedded energy, but more importantly, I think, because from the street, although this will be different, it won't be that different. It will no longer be, oh my gosh, it's something's getting torn down to build something that's dramatically different. This is something that's gonna function dramatically different, but it's gonna be aesthetically engaging and pleasing.
Great. Thank you very much, I appreciate that, and thanks for calling in this evening.
Thank you.
That's it for questions, thanks so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for calling in this evening. And we have, just so folks know, you can call one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, follow up participant code five-nine-two-eight-one-four, hashtag, to get on the speakers list. We have, our next speaker is Peter Campa.
Thank you.
Please go ahead, up to five minutes, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Peter Campa, and I'm the owner of six-eight-seven-five West Boulevard. And my property is the property that borders the entire south side of Sixth West Boulevard. So I've already sent in a letter of support for this project, but I also wanted to verbally applaud the work and the vision that has really gone into this whole project. From you and the city of Vancouver, you've all done such a good job in how you've retained a beautiful heritage home, as well, you've added much-needed livable density to the neighbourhood through your infills. And for me, I just see these infills will allow the additional families to come into my neighbourhood and enjoy what the neighbourhood has to offer, at a more affordable housing cost compared to just the one big monster house accommodating the one family. So just to keep it short and sweet, in a nutshell, I would like to say, well done, Formworks, and well done, city of Vancouver staff, for all the efforts that you've put into this whole project. That is all. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks very much for your time, and I'm just looking here at the, you don't have any questions, sir, so thank you very much for phoning in this evening.
Good evening.
I'm just, okay, thank you. Clerks, is anybody else on the line?
Mayor, we have the next speaker in person, and he's just coming to the chamber now.
Thank you very much, and just whenever person's ready to go, please let me know.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Von Han, and I live about two blocks away from this potential development. I am totally for heritage preservation. We live in a nineteen-twelve house that was built by the Principal of McGee Secondary. I'm totally for heritage preservation. However, this project is a precedent development. This project is not just a single-family. This will change the West Boulevard from fiftieth right through to fifty-seventh. It is a huge development. It is nine units. This should go to a land assembly potential. It is not a single-family redevelopment. This development is excessive. It is nine units in a neighbourhood that is single-family. I could understand you would wanting to keep the Heritage House, and maybe make it into units, and build a laneway, or build a carriage house. However, to build nine units on a single-family lot, the first of a long block on the Arbutus Greenway, is totally irresponsible. It's under the guise, under the pretext of heritage, to make a major development on a street that has no development. I'm all in favour of Marine Drive, we've had developments there, we've preserved houses. This one is not in the same frame. I think this is, should be, I think partly the neighbourhood is worried about the fact that these houses will be looking onto, onto the neighbouring properties. We have just had a major development, and continue to have major developments on West Boulevard. We had the new Savon Foods come in, we have Carisdale Lumber now, that site will be developed. There's many on both sides. We are having increased density, but to then push it to the south side of the city, behind an area where it's single-family zoned, and to make it into nine units is absolutely not acceptable. I noticed that councillor Hardwick spoke of the devil in the details. I think you need to look at the details, I think you're looking at a precedent for the whole block. I think that it lines up, it does not line up with the existing homes in the neighbourhood, and I am totally opposed to the development as it stands. I think it should be sent back, and it should be reviewed, so that it is something that will fit into the neighbourhood. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much for calling in, or for coming in in person, and there are no questions for you, sir, so appreciate your comments today. And I'm going to just call, is there any other speakers? Just ask the moderator if there's any other speakers on the line?
Good evening, Mayor. I will double-check. If there are any additional speakers that would like to speak to this item, item three, please press star one now. Again, for any additional speakers that would like to speak to this item, please press star one now. Mayor and councillors, there does not seem to be any response to my instructions.
Thanks, and I'm gonna call three times for additional speakers. So if anybody wants to talk to this item, please call one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, participant code five-nine-two-eight-one-four-two, hashtag, that will get you on the list. Council, as I'm just pausing here for a second, I'll just let you know that after we finish this item, just to get set up for the next one, we're just gonna take a five-minute break and then come back to it. We will have probably a decision to make, because there are a lot of speakers for this next item, so we'll have to decide whether to extend here speakers, so I'll let you kind of mull that over. And I'm gonna call a second time now on this item, one-eight-three-three-three-five-three-eight-six-one-zero, participant code five-nine-two-eight-one-four-two, hashtag, to get on the list. And the clerk's suggesting we take our five-minute recess before we, I make my third call. So, council, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you some time to stretch your legs now, it is nine-oh-three, and I'll just ask you to come back on at nine-oh, it's nine-oh-four, so, yeah, let's say nine-ten, we will come back, and I'll make my third call, and we'll debate and decide on this matter. So, see you in about six minutes. So see you in about six minutes. 1-833-353-8610, participant code 5928142 hashtag. Get on the speakers list. This is my third and final call. And I'm going to ask the moderator if there's anyone on the line who wants to speak to this item.
Good evening, Mayor. I can just double check really quickly. If there are any additional speakers that would like to speak to item three, please press star one now. Again, if there are any additional speakers that would like to speak to item three, please press star one now. Mayor and councilors, no one has responded to my instructions. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Seeing there are no additional speakers, the speakers list is now closed. And as we had no public comments received after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we close the public comments and move on to hearing, uh, this, uh, closing comments and making a decision. Applicant team, have any closing comments? Perhaps take your cell phone.
You to myself now?
Okay, any closing comments?
Yes, uh, ju- just one brief one, thank you. Um, the character retention guidelines for the RS districts in Vancouver now provide for six units on properties, uh, sixty-six feet wide, perhaps by a hundred and twenty feet deep. Um, this, um, the site area is roughly four times that. And, um, I'd like to just reiterate that, uh, we've maintained the point six FSR in spite of the fact that the character retention provisions have boosted that to point eight-five. So, uh, really, we're much less, uh, than densities which were provided for under the guidance of Planning Department at this time. And that's really all I have to contribute at this time. But I'm available for questions further on.
Okay, thanks so much. Uh, we, uh, we're kind of through the, uh, questions to, uh, the applicant, but I'll ask, uh, quest- uh, counsel if they have any questions for staff. And I've got Consular Hardwick here. Uh, Consular Hardwick, up to five minutes, uh, questions for staff.
Actually, I don't have any questions for staff. I was going to move the motion.
Oh, excellent. I don't see anybody else on the, on the list, so, uh, you're, um, that's fine to do that. Do we have a second there?
Second by Consular Carr.
Thanks very much. And do we?
I'd like to continue to speak on, on the matter, if, if that's okay.
Yes, I'm just gonna move you to a different queue. And I've got Consular Hardwick up to five minutes. Go ahead, and Consular Kirby Young after that. So Consular Hardwick, go ahead.
I've been listening to this very carefully. Um, I grew up in this neighborhood on Forty-Ninth Avenue, uh, ways little east of here. Um, and I know the area intimately. Um, I also watch what's happened in the neighborhood. Uh, my grandparents were down on Fifty-second and, and their sixty-by-a-hundred-and-twenty-foot lot, their wonderful old heritage house was torn down and replaced by a monster house. And the house that I lived, I grew up on on Forty-Ninth Avenue was torn down and became duplex and infill together there. So when I look at a lot like this and I see the opportunity for exactly the kind of gentle density that I believe that the city needs, uh, I, I believe it has to be encouraged. The heritage retention, uh, obviously speaks to me. And, um, it's not just that, that the, the original house is being retained, but the style is being, uh, continued throughout the, uh, dwellings on the property. I look at other, uh, heritage, uh, places that have had multiple units. I look at Mole Hill, for example, and you can say it's in the West End, but where you've got thirty-three-foot lots with six units. You know, you have four units and a main house and a duplex, uh, laneway. It's, to me, this is what we, we really need to, to be doing. And I think post-COVID now, the use of space and, and the ability for people to get around, um, outside, the ground-oriented architecture. Um, the only thing that current concerns me a bit is the absence of a lane. But it, it looks to me from the, uh, from the layout that it's been carefully considered. So for all of these reasons, I, um, I, I do support it. And to the, to the speaker that came in and talked about the devils in the details, agreed. But, um, this one passes that kind of scrutiny. Will it change the neighborhood? Yes. But I would rather see this kind of ground-oriented gentle en- density, uh, building off of, of the character of the neighborhood than the alternatives that I've seen and lived through. So for that reason, I, I enthusiastically support it.
Thanks so much. Uh, Consular Kirby Young, up to five minutes.
Yeah, I, I will speak in favor of this project. I, I love this project. Um, there's, I, I love almost everything about it. Um, it, you've got the retention of the, um, the A-class her- twist residence, um, fully, um, which is significant. Um, and I think that's something we want to celebrate versus losing our houses. I think we need to see absolutely more of this infill, um, type of housing across the city that is done in a thoughtful way and is complimentary to the context and the character, um, of the neighborhoods. And in this particular case, um, in addition with the heritage aspect of it. Um, I, I think we're gonna need to do an awful lot more of this for it to be affordable because these are generously sized units. I think the, the state at approximately two thousand square feet, that's still a pretty hefty price point, um, and not affordable for a lot of people in the city. But it is a start and a move, I think, in the right direction towards, um, gentle infill. And, and I think it's, it's a refreshing alternative to always seeing towers, um, and other proposals coming through because it does provide that human scale. Um, I also note that I often talk to a lot of residents in these neighborhoods and they say that they are hollowing out and that they don't have different generations. Kids are moving away, um, either to, you know, they're moving further and further east or out of the city sometimes because they can't stay in the neighborhoods that they grew up in. Um, and I think there's a lot of positive to enabling doing that. So I think the word that, um, our speaker, Mr. Frye, used was superlative, which I thought was a, a really strong one. Um, and I also appreciated hearing, uh, from direct neighbors, um, Mr. Campbell, when he spoke, um, and talked about livable density. Um, and I think that that's an important phrase, too, um, livable density. Um, and I certainly think that this achieves that. So this is, um, a bit of a unique one. We don't often, or we haven't had the option to have many of these at council, but I hope we have a lot more of them coming forward. And I'm very happy to support it. Thank you.
Thanks, counsel. Uh, thank you, Consular, uh, Kirby Young. Sorry, just getting my screen up here. Uh, over to Consular Boyle, up to five minutes.
Thank you. Uh, and I also will be quite enthusiastically supporting this project, uh, like Consular Hardwick. I also grew up in this neighborhood. Um, and I could count on one hand the, uh, folks I grew up with who, uh, have been able to afford to stay living in the neighborhood. So I, I am very enthusiastic about seeing all kinds of, uh, housing options come into this neighborhood, uh, and nearby neighborhoods so that folks who grew up in them can stay in them so new, uh, people can move in. I, I really appreciate the way that density's been added on this lot. Uh, I think it creates homes for more neighbors, which, uh, which benefits neighborhoods. And I would love to continue to see more, uh, more affordable than single-family home options, uh, more multifamily options in, uh, a neighborhood I know intimately, um, and am very fond of and know, would benefit from having more young families and more neighbors be able to call it home.
Thank you for that. Um, Counselor Dominado, up to five minutes.
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me? Just checking.
I can, yep, go ahead.
Fantastic. Um, I, uh, like my colleagues, am, um, uh, very enthusiastic about this, this project. It, um, I think it goes without saying, I, from my perspective, I think we need to see more of this. I know my colleagues have touched on the gentle density aspect. Um, but in the context of, uh, the city needs to change, um, the city we have today is not the same as it was a hundred years ago. And I'm certainly, a hundred years from now, maybe none of us will be around, I'm certain it will look different. And it should look different in my mind, um, particularly when we look at, um, the land that we have and I, and, and how we might utilize it differently to accommodate, um, our different population or, and, um, to accommodate, looking at, um, particularly as we look at young people, as Consular Boyle pointed out, that, um, most of the friends, those that she grew up with are, are probably not living in that neighborhood anymore. There haven't been options for them. And I also know, I have many friends who, um, got outpriced and, and couldn't stay in the city of Vancouver and, and moved to the suburbs. And so I, I think this is an exact example of, of what need, we need to see more of. Um, uh, the multifamily options, uh, the infill, row homes, town homes, triplexes, fourplexes. And, uh, I don't think that runs contrary to these neighborhoods. Uh, I think it's a great fit. And, um, it, I think it will help with affordability. Uh, these are stratified units, I believe. And I, I think, wouldn't it be interesting to see something like this that, uh, was a mix of, of strata and rental? And, and so we, we fundamentally need more diversity and we need to use our land differently. And, um, and make it accessible for people, um, to live in the city with a range of incomes. And, um, and, and I think that, um, that there is really, um, really challenging for, um, young people who are, um, trying to make their way into the housing market here, but also for newcomers and people coming to our city. And so we really have to put a, a broad lens on housing, both an equity lens, but an affordability lens. And, um, I, I really think this is a fantastic project. And I think that, um, Mr. Frye, who spoke earlier, uh, he was banging on and sort of talking about this being a visionary statement, uh, something that, uh, really illustrates what can be, what's possible, and hopefully sends a signal, um, to the broader development community. And, uh, and I hope that we can do more of this in the city going forward.
Thanks so much. Uh, Consular Swanson, go ahead.
Yeah. So I'm just sitting here thinking, you guys all live in a completely different world than I live in. Um, if you, if you add up all the units that we're gonna be considering today, there's almost five hundred. And only thirty of them are for moderate-income people, none for the poor. Here we have a lot that's going from one house to nine units, so the value is obviously increasing. You'd think we could at least get one of those units that would be even halfway affordable or one of those units that would be rental. We talk about the right supply and how we have to have the right supply, the right supply. And then we keep approving the wrong supply that people can't afford. And I think this is a huge problem. That's it.
Thanks so much, Consular Dejanova.
Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
I can, please go ahead.
Okay, great, thanks so much. Uh, I, I mean, in listening to the debates, I, I think that it, this is a perfect example of the fact that it doesn't need to be either or. We can find, we can find that middle that is missing in the city. And I think that that's so important. And, you know, the, the points that Consular Swanson made, I think we have a goal, but we're not gonna get there, uh, unless we try. And I think that there are steps that we have to take to get there. Uh, that being said, I, I think that it's important that we do keep our, our eyes focused on that goal. And, and I know that that's why we, we certainly do require, uh, certain level of affordability within the projects that, uh, that come forward and within our policy. And we spend hours and hours, days and days debating that policy on the floor of council. Um, here, we're supposed to consider this project. And I think that this project is a good example for those two groups of people that often, you know, uh, are described as the Yimby's and the Nimby's. And the fact is, is that you can retain heritage and still, uh, provide housing. And I think that it's important that we do look at ye- land use. And we do look at, you know, both the consequences and the benefits of stratification and, uh, land some subdivision and, and what that may look like to stratify units and build on land. Will that in fact make housing more affordable? In some cases, with a land assembly, it may. Uh, but only if that land's affordable for the land assembly. So that being said, we're here to debate this project right now. And I think that this certainly is a good step forward. Uh, and I think it's headed in the right direction. So I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, counsel, that's it for, uh, comments. And, uh, I think we can, uh, that's the debate, so we're gonna call a vote.
Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, Consular Boy. I would like a vote assist in favor, please.
Okay, thank you very much. And Consular Dejanova, do you need a vote assist as well?
My panel has presented, so yes, in favor, please.
Okay, thanks so much. And, uh, clerks, thank you. If we can pull this up on screen as well so the public can see. This has passed, uh, with Consular Swanson in opposition. Thanks so much. Uh, so counsel, it is 9:25. We have rezoning, uh, for Nelson Street coming up. Uh, we have a lot of people on the speakers list, uh, that I can see. We have at least, um, sixteen people on the speakers list. And I'm just looking for suggestions how people want to proceed. We could, for example, I don't think we'll get through all sixteen people, uh, in thirty-five minutes. So we could, uh, extend to hear from speakers. We could, uh, call it early and not start the whole application. There are a number of, uh, there are a number of, of suggestions, uh, because we will have to go through the entire presentation. Um, so, uh, does anybody have, uh, suggestions as to a motion, what we should do here?
I'm happy to move to wave presentation, Mr. Mayor, but that's only if other counselors don't want to see it.
I think it's such a big, big project. There's so many speakers, I think we probably should have the presentation.
Okay, my apologies, I thought you-
No, 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 that's so good. I'm looking for suggestions, so thanks for that.
Mr. Mayor, I didn't know that, if you wanted us on the list or not, but my suggestion is, uh, we've gone through two very long days. Um, my suggestion is we hear the presentation and we hear whatever speakers we can until ten o'clock and that we refer, uh, the rest of the speakers and, um, the discussion and debate on this item to whatever, uh, day. Um, and meeting the clerk has seemed to be the appropriate one to back up to this.
And just so, uh, counsel knows, that would be Tuesday, June 30th at 7:30 PM?
Second.
Okay, so we're going to, uh, the motion on the floor-
Point of information, if I might.
Just let me repeat the, uh, the motion as I understand it and then we can, we can get there. Uh, so the motion is, um, to, uh, hear the presentation and get through as many speakers as possible. And then, uh, the rest, uh, we hear, uh, on the, sorry, uh, June 30th at 7:30 PM. This is a debatable motion, so I will, it has been seconded, so I'll put a queue up if anybody wants to speak to this.
Um, information? Oh, sorry, I'm not on the floor. I can refer to that. Point of, uh, uh, procedure, um, permission?
You sure?
Yeah, I, I am because, because, um, you said two different things, so I want clarification on that.
Okay, sorry, that's entirely possible. Okay, so, so-
At one point, you said seven PM and then you said seven-thirty PM.
It is seven-thirty, I'm sorry.
Seven-thirty. And, um, you did not include, um, that we would end at ten o'clock tonight and, and I, I believe, yeah, okay.
It's your motion, so, I'm sorry, I've, I, I phrased it incorrectly. Right, so we would stop at ten tonight. We would get through the presentation as many speakers as we could. Then we would come back June 30th at 7:30 PM. And that's what's on the floor. Consular Kirby Young, go ahead. This is debatable, so.
Yeah, I have a point of information. And if I might, uh, two of them related to that. One, um, is that I note that June 30th is the evening before statutory holiday on Canada Day. And I'm just wondering if that's best practice to start at seven-thirty on an important item. And my second point of information is that right now we have a special council meeting scheduled from six to eight, but we do not have a reserved date that I see indicated in the council's calendar. So can I get clarification on those two points, please?
Uh, so the clerk, uh, I, I believe that, uh, the clerk's telling me that no other times are available. And of course, uh, you know, the timing may not be ideal, but we could always, uh, decide not to, uh, not, not to approve this, uh, motion or to amend it. Um, but, uh, at this point, there's no other times available. And the clerk did send out a schedule today, uh, with, uh, with outlining our entire schedule until the end of, of July. So that's, uh, that's why we're at where we're at at the moment.
Okay, so on that basis, um, and given the fact that speaking to the, to the motion task to have a handle schedule, I'm, I'm not supportive because I just don't think that that's great practice to shift all the speakers the night before a stat holiday and with a late start. Um, I really appreciate it's been two very long days for council right now. Um, but that just doesn't feel good to me around process. I would be happy, um, if there's a subsequent discussion based on council's decision to extend an hour tonight and try to get through, especially since people have been waiting. So I'll leave it there.
Okay, thank you. Consular Swanson, go ahead.
I support Consular Carr's motion.
Okay, thank you. Consular Dejanova?
Um, Mr. Mayor, point of information. I was just wondering if you could, uh, can-
Um, Mr. Mayor, point of information, I was just wondering if you could confirm how many speakers we have signed up and registered at this point?
16. 16, and then, and then we call at the, yeah, 16 speakers, and then we have a call at the end for more, so it could very well be more than that.
Of course, of course we do. I, I understand that, and this is a point of parliamentary procedure, but if, if we didn't, if, for instance, there would be no debate and decision tonight if there was not a unanimous motion, but we could hear from speakers and close off the speakers list, is that correct?
Yeah, if we go, if we extend past 10 o'clock, we could, we could hear from all the speakers and close off the speakers list, that would be, if we extended past 10, that would be as far as we've got, I'm sure.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm happy to hear from other councillors, I see them on the queue, and let them decide, but I'm fine with either. Thanks.
Okay, great. Thank you. Counsel Domenado?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, really quickly through you to the mover of the motion, was the intent to hear all of the speakers this evening, was that Counselor Carr's intent?
No, it, it wasn't, it's that we would, we would stop the meeting at 10 PM, and hear from as many speakers as we could before then.
Okay. So, I share similar concerns to Counselor Kirby Young. I don't think it's fair to be shifting speakers over to Tuesday evening, when I would expect that the holiday the next day, people are just wanting to have some R and R, so I don't think that's very fair. I would prefer to hear all the speakers this evening, or to find a time on another date, whether that be Monday next week, or early in the day Tuesday, or on the following Thursday or Friday, but I don't think it's fair for people who are maybe looking forward to the holiday. So, I, I sort of was going into the evening.
Right, and I think that the clerk has sent around the schedule earlier about our action pack schedule for the next month. There really are no other days other than this one, and, and so that, that's, we are where we are, in terms of that. Counsel Hardwick? Uh, you're on mute, I think?
It's 9:32. We've got 16 speakers. The presentation will take, what, five minutes?
Oh, no, it's, I think it might take a little longer, because we often ask questions afterwards.
Fair enough. I don't think it's reasonable under any of these scenarios that we would get to debate and decision tonight.
No.
Um, it's, if 16 times five minutes do the math, we know what that's going to take, and if we've got a presentation, it, we're biting off a chunk here, and the expectation of getting through this by 11 o'clock tonight, I think is a bit sort of on the slim to none side. So, I would like to get an evaluation from the clerk, based on this, the information that's at hand, the length of time expected for the presentation, the length of time expected for questions of staff, or could we say that we would, we would fly questions to staff to the day when we get to debate and decision, perhaps? But just the sheer volume of speakers, to get through that an hour and a half with questions, I just don't think we're being realistic.
The, the clerks informed me that we could do it Tuesday morning at 9:30, but you, the council would have to make themselves available for that time. So, that, we really are, you know, we are drifting into July, there's only two council meetings left before the, you know, we don't sit in August, so that's really, we have so many various hearings, and COVID committee meetings, and all those kind of things, that's kind of where we're at for public hearings and things, so that's where we're at.
Could we have an estimate, though, please, in, in the length of time estimated for the presentation?
Sure, it's really up to, about 10 to 15 minutes for the presentation, but of course, it, it depends on questions from council, both to the presenters and the applicant, and to the speakers, that's, that's what's taken most of the time this evening, so hard to estimate.
As an alternative, would it be possible just to start with speakers and make the staff presentation at a later date?
Uh, that's not the usual practice when we have speakers, and so many speakers, because it gives the applicant a chance to explain their, their project. And this is, this is a pretty big project, so I think we'd all want to see the, the presentation.
Well, we would see it, it's just the order of events, because our priority seems to be hearing the speakers.
Well, the thing is, the speakers also should see the presentation before they speak, because it often informs their, their input into the project, especially if there's some uncertainties that can be cleared up beforehand. We usually don't do it that way, especially on a project like this, which is, which is, you know, large.
We usually don't stay till midnight either, which is where we will be, unless we plan-
Well, we just spent a lot of time on the, on the text amendment, so, I mean, that's what, that's what, that's what's here. So, so I'm just laying out the options for you. We do have a motion on the floor, which is to break at 10 o'clock, try to see the presentation, and at this point, we probably wouldn't hear from any speakers, because it's 9:35, and then come back on either Tuesday morning, or Tuesday evening.
Sorry.
Uh, well, we don't, Counsel Hardwick still has the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm still trying to think this through, and hoping that we can find something that works.
Counsel Dejanova, you have the floor now, up to five minutes.
So, sorry, Mr. Mayor, just a point of information on this. Would the, if we heard the presentation tonight, would that be something that would be viewable? Would the exact presentation that we received tonight, if it's not already available to the public, would it be? I'm not sure if there's anything more that will be available to the public than what has already been, I mean, I know there's been extensive consultation, I'm not questioning that.
No, no, I mean, there's just, there's just rules for the, the public hearings and how we conduct them under the charter, so we have to, you know, we, we will show the presentation, and, and that'll be publicly viewed, and then the council will ask questions, you know, it's just a regular, there's no real shortcuts here. We, we have 16 speakers to a, to a building, and council has questions to ask, so, and we've got 25 minutes.
I, yeah, I don't want to spend any more time debating it, I'm fine with either, so I will, I'll, I'll, you know, if anyone's opposed, we don't move to debate and decision tonight, but I'm fine to hear from speakers. Thanks.
Okay, Counsel Carr.
Yes. Um, my suggestion was to go with a, a date that, that the city clerk would advise us of, and I just think we should test for Tuesday, June, uh, sorry, this coming Tuesday.
Okay, I mean, uh-
In the daytime, 9:30, 9:30, was it 9:30 in the morning, I think?
Yeah, I can't really, can't really-
Yeah, it was 9:30.
Can't really test, because we're, we're kind of debating at this point. I mean, people can, people can put themselves on their list if they wish to comment.
Since, since it was my motion, and you said either or, why don't I just specify that my motion was a date suggested by the clerk, and that date is Tuesday, June 30th at 9:30 in the morning.
Okay, and we'll put you on an amendment queue, because that's now an amended motion. Anybody wish to speak to this one? So, again, the motion on the floor, as it is, is that we would see the presentation tonight, try to hear as many speakers, but conclude at 10 PM, and then reconvene on June 30th at 9:30 AM. And we need a second for this.
Second.
Okay, Counselor Swanson, so, Counsel Hardwick?
That was just me, I was trying to second.
Okay, great, thanks. Counsel Dejanova?
Oh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I would just hope that Counsel Carr amended her own motion to extend it, at least hear the presentation if it goes beyond 10, and then end after that if we're in the middle of a presentation. Thank you.
I think we can get through that by, by 10. We have about 20 minutes, if we settle this now, we can get through the presentation for sure.
I'm done. That's fine with me.
Okay, Counsel Domenado?
Uh, yeah, no, I'll just simply, I won't be supporting the motion, and it's because I really think we should be extending past 10 to hear the speakers, and that's not the motion on the floor, so I won't be supporting it.
Okay, great, thanks. Actually, we, we've got the amendment first, I guess, which would be Counselor Carr's motion, plus we would start at Tuesday at, at 9:30, so I'll call a vote on, on that one, which is amending the motion to add June 30th at 9:30 in the morning, so I can call a vote on that, Clerks. Almost there. Counsel Bly, do you need a vote assist?
Yes, thank you, in favor.
Okay, thanks. And Counsel Dejanova, vote assist?
Just wanted to make sure I understood what we were voting on, Mr. Mayor, this is for 9:30 AM on Tuesday?
Yes, June 30th. That's added to the motion.
All right, I will, I'll abstain.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so we're back to the main queue, and so the motion, as Counsel Carr has it, is that we would basically see the presentation tonight, stop at 10 o'clock, then we would return on June 30th to hear the speakers and make our decision.
Point of parliamentary procedure, what was the vote? What was the, what was the result of the vote on that?
Oh, it passed. Yep. Sorry about that. Uh, with, I'm sorry, I should have read out the opposition. Is that important to you? It did pass, like, by a lot.
Mayor Stewart?
I forgot to read the opposed.
We have one council voting in opposition, that's Counsel Domenado.
Right, okay. Thank you, clerk. Okay, so Counsel Carr, do you have anything else to say on your amended motion?
Nope.
Okay, Counsel Boyle?
Um, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to be clear, I will abstain, I have an LOA for next Tuesday, for family reasons, so I won't be able to join then, but I'm, I'm fine with whatever gets decided.
Okay, thanks. Okay, I'm going to call a vote on this. Counsel Bly?
That's in favor, thank you.
Thanks, in favor. Counsel Dejanova?
It won't let me abstain, Mr. Mayor, could I get a vote assist to abstain?
Okay, thanks. Counsel, that's passed, so we have Counsel Domenado and Counsel Kirby Young in opposition, so we are going to conclude tonight at, at 10 o'clock. I suggest that will just give us time to get through the presentation, and perhaps to hear from the applicant. But, so with that, council, I think it's important to, also for the moderator to explain to the, the speakers on the line that we'll, we'll be returning June, oh, I'm sorry. Well, this is the Nelson Street rezoning, yeah. No, right, so I guess we'll read out the correspondence and, and move along. All right, Clerks?
This is an application by IBI Group Architects to rezone 1059 through 1075 Nelson Street from RM 5B District to CD1 District to permit the development of a 60-story residential building. The building height of 178.5 meters and a floor space ratio of 24.7 are proposed. Since being referred to public hearing, council has received 32 pieces of correspondence in support, and 11 pieces of correspondence in opposition to the application. This represents all correspondence received up to approximately 7 PM today.
Thanks so much. Um, sorry, I just got to read through my script here. Okay, so, just so, we won't call for speakers, because there won't be any this evening, but Nicholas Danford from the rezoning center to go through the presentation.
Great, thank you, Mayor Stewart. Just confirming that you can hear me and see my presentation?
Yes, I can.
Great. Good evening, council, thanks for hanging in there tonight. My name is Nick Danford, and I'm the rezoning planner for the application to rezone 1059 and 1075 Nelson Street to allow for a 60-story residential building. So, the site's located in the West End, close to the intersection of Nelson and Thurlow Streets. This is, this part of town is a transitional area where the West End meets the downtown. As you can see, many of the properties in the West End are zoned RM for multifamily residential developments. Well, as you move further east along Burrard and towards the downtown, there are higher density residential zone sites, along with downtown district zone properties that allow for hotel and office uses. The immediate surrounding blocks contain mainly residential buildings, some of which have recently been rezoned and, or are current rezoning applications. These developments range from three stories across the street from the subject site, to the 57-story Butterfly Building immediately to the east, that is currently under construction. The site's conveniently located within meters of Nelson Park, Lord Roberts Elementary School Annex, and other West End schools. It also steps away from frequent bus service along Burrard that connects to the Skytrain, as well as the rest of the city. This proposal is responding to the West End Community Plan. The plan also, sorry, the plan allows for increased density along the Burrard Corridor for market residential developments that provide significant public benefit. I just wanted to clarify that the public hearing notification postcard that went out a couple of weeks ago did quote an enabling policy for this project as the rezoning policy for the CBD, and CBD shoulder. The enabling policy is indeed the West End Plan, I just wanted to acknowledge and apologize for that slight mix-up. So, the proposed height of the building means that the project is subject to the higher buildings policy, which allows for certain sites, sites within the downtown to protrude into the Queen Elizabeth View Corridor. This policy requires that any higher building development establish a significant and recognizable new benchmark for architectural creativity, also should demonstrate leadership in building sustainability, as well as contribute to the network of public spaces within the downtown. So, proposed tonight is a 60-story, 585-foot residential building. The building is proposed to be built to passive house sustainability standards, and contains a mix of tenures, including market strata, market rental, social hous, and social housing, comprised of approximately 427,000 square feet of residential floor space, or 480 The city-led open house was well-attended, with 178 residents joining. Folks appreciated the architectural design of the building, the sustainability elements, and the project's contribution to affordable housing in the city. However, there were concerns raised about the overall height, massing, and density of the building, increase in traffic to the local area, as well as shadowing on Nelson Park. I'll now jump into staff's analysis of the proposal, and the response to the concerns So, the West End Plan allows for tower floor plates to be a maximum of 7,500 square feet in this location. This project proposes an averaging approach to floor plate size, whereby floor plates vary in size as you move up the building. Staff support the averaging for this design, as it helps produce the tower's distinct curved profile as seen for the north and south elevations. I will note that the application included deep indentations in the floor plate on the north and south elevations that contained sky gardens and tree plantings. Through the review process, these deep indentations have been largely removed, however, the oscillating profile of the building remains. In this case, the averaging floor plate size is 8,108 square feet. The large floor plate is in consideration of the elements required for the building of this size to meet passive house sustainability standards. This consideration is consistent with the city's approach to, to pass tower, pass, pass towers, passive house rezonings, excuse me. Additionally, though larger than anticipated in the plan, the floor plate is comparable to towers within the immediate area, including the Butterfly Building, which is approximately 8,500 square feet, and the neighboring Patina Building at Barclay and Burrard, which measures at 8,200 square feet. The proposed height of 585 feet includes the pertinences, and also accommodates passive house components. For comparison, the Shangri-La Tower is approximately 650 feet, and the Butterfly Building, once complete, will be approximately 580 feet. So, a natural consequence of the height proposed is the shadow impact on public space. West End guidelines seek to limit shadows on parks and villages, village centers, like Robson Street, between 10 AM and 3 PM. This proposal does produce a shadow on Lord Roberts School Annex from 10 AM to 10:20, demonstrated on the slide in front of you, with a shadow of the proposed building in blue. The gray shadow to the south of the subject shadow is that of the Butterfly Building. As you can see, the shadow produced from the proposed building is mostly overlapped by the Butterfly Shadow. The impact of the shadow from the building is nominally felt on the school playground at the corner of Nelson and Butte, at the equinoxes. So, due to the proximity of the subject site to Nelson Park, avoidance of all shadow on either the park or the school would require a reduction of height to less than half of what is prescribed in the West End Plan. Contributing to the network of green spaces throughout the city, this project proposes an expansion of a mid-block connection, the two-and-a-half-meter pedestrian connection- The two and a half meter pedestrian connection matches that which was, excuse me, which was secured in the Butterfly rezoning. The urban design panel reviewed the proposal last year, June last year, and was supportive of the application. So with regards to housing policy, the West End Plan requires that either twenty-five percent of new floor area is provided as social housing, or that existing rental units on site are replaced with a minimum one-for-one with social housing units, whichever one is greater. The proposed hundred and two social housing units account for twenty-two percent of the project floor area or twenty-five percent of the project floor area less the market rental component of the project. While the West End Plan anticipated social housing being comprised of twenty-five percent of the total floor area, the plan did not anticipate that market rental housing would be on offer. In this case, staff support the tenure split in order to secure market rental and recognize that the social housing provided significantly exceeds the one-for-one replacement. At the time of application, there were thirty-one tenants living on the site eligible under the city's tenant relocation policy. The average rent was a thousand twenty-five dollars for a studio or a one-bedroom suite. Since the time of application, twenty-seven residents have moved out and received a relocation compensation. Tenants who have moved out will have first rate of refusal for those who qualify for the social housing units. For tenants who may not qualify for social housing, they will be eligible to, for the market rental units at market rates. Through the rezoning process, the building has been re-tenanted with all new tenants acknowledging that they would not be eligible under the tenant relocation policy. Vehicular parking is provided on nine levels of underground access from Ted North Lane at the rear of the site. As a condition of rezoning, the applicant will also be required to fund further transportation upgrades, including traffic calming to the lane, as well as signal upgrades to the intersection of Thurlow and Nelson Street. The CAC offering consists of in-kind delivery of twenty-five percent of the floor area of the project less the market rental component. The calculated value of this in-kind amenity is seventy million dollars and consists of over ninety-four thousand square feet or a hundred and two, uh, a hundred and two units. Additionally, as part of the Restart Smart Vancouver Initiative in response to COVID nineteen, this project will contribute approximately seventeen hundred new construction jobs during the initiative's recovery phase. Mayor and council, staff support the proposal to rezone ten fifty-nine and ten seventy-five Nelson Street, subject to the conditions as outlined in appendix B in the report in front of you. Staff support the project's contribution in achieving housing Vancouver's goals through contributing a considerable amount of social housing to the city's stock. The passive house standard proposed in the project will be a significant, will be significant in advancing green building technology in the city, as well as the design contributes to the city's skyline and network of green spaces throughout the downtown. Staff and the applicant are available for questions, thank you.
Thank you, uh, so much for your presentation. Council, we are at seven minutes to ten, uh, the applicant is here. But what I'm suggesting is, you know, let's not try to squeeze any more into six minutes. Uh, let's just, uh, be satisfied with this, uh, with this presentation. Staff will be here, of course, to answer all our questions on Tuesday morning. Let's, uh, let's not make the applicant hurry, uh, they're, uh, they have a video and a whole bunch of other stuff to tell us. So it, it is such a, a big project, let's give it the attention it needs. Um, and so I'm suggesting we just, uh, we just, um, what's that word?
Recede?
Recede, until Tuesday-
Motion to recess?
Second, it's seconder?
Councillor Carr, second.
Thanks, and all in favor say yea?
Yea.
Yea.
All saying yea. Okay, so the, uh, this meeting is recessed until June thirtieth at nine thirty PM here in council chambers to-
AM.
Sorry, AM, to continue with, uh, item, this item number, which is the Nelson Street development. Um, remind council that it's important you do not engage in any discussion or correspondence in regard to the, uh, application. And it's important you do not engage in any discussion or correspond- yeah, that's right. So don't talk to anybody about this one, and we'll reconvene on Tuesday morning at nine thirty. I'm just, the clerk is furiously writing something here, so, great.
Point of parliamentary procedure, would you-
Yes, okay.
Yes, you said, said reconvene in council chambers, do you mean that, um, actually not in council chambers, but via-
No, not in council chambers, right here, virtually, so-
Thank you.
I think half of what I'm saying is nonsensical at this point because I did chair a police board meeting earlier, so, uh, that's it. I'm good, thank you everybody for your time this evening, apologies to the speakers that are not getting to you, and we'll, uh, see you reconvene on this one on Tuesday morning.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, okay, goodnight.
Night.